Come on, come. You're Charlie Palmasano?
He's here. Uh, you're muted at present.
Here. I'm muted and present.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Brian Duncan.
Here.
And Victor here. Chair.
So this is a joint hearing with the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee. This is an item committee of the whole. It is ordinance 179 tonight. Connie Preston, Councilor Preston is present. Mark Wright is on his way. That, so we have a forum of our committee and then we have the two sponsors, Councilor Khan and Councilor Harmon. And then Councilor Polly is in the audience. So we can get started. Councilor Wright, please.
So I guess we have an update on the ordinance.
You, uh, I saw some slides, um.
Do you want?
Sorry, the computer just wasn't responding. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, okay, so, yeah, I, I think, first of all, thank you. This is our third joint, uh, meeting with the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Committee. Uh, it, it's been a great process for us and we hope that what we've been able to present here today is taking into account those two joint hearings and the feedback here. And then we had a really good productive Planning and Development Committee as well. It was, uh, one week after the second joint hearing. And from that, the sponsor and I, uh, got a lot of good feedback. And I think what you'll see today is going to be different in a few ways and we're going to talk about why. And then we will share with you what we think are some of the more substantive differences and make sure you understand what those differences are, especially against what the state requirements are. So where, you know, that level of transparency is important. And sometimes it's not easy to see when you just look at the ordinances as they are written. So what you'll see here, a combination of, is we've created some tables, but please follow along with the ordinance as well. If, um, luckily everyone has a laptop or some version to be able to see, uh, your iPad. But feel free to follow along with the document itself and you'll see we pulled together something to just talk through it easily in this fine day. So I will let Councilor Harmon do like the first few.
Sure. So just to, we'll give a little recap, uh, on why we are, uh, sponsoring this amendment. Um, also summarize the changes through the process as, um, Councilor Khan describes, um, what will trigger a permit, uh, and review. Uh, we'll have a, a comment opportunity and then, um, as usual deliberation and, uh, and see if there's a recommendation to the council. So new report household size versus unit size. This is, um, essentially shows the mismatch that we, as a community, have, uh, more demand for smaller houses than we have. Um, and so one of the reasons, uh, to support creation of an ADU amendment, uh, or an amendment to the in-law apartment, um, zoning, make it ADUs in addition to the state requirement is that it should, uh, facilitate folks being able to have more flexibility of their property to create rentals, um, that, um, have all, you know, they're, they're, you know, have to be part of that property. They can't be, uh, sold as condos, they can't be used as short-term rentals, but it should help to address this need. So this, uh, ordinance is being revised in part because, uh, the state passed law, uh, in August that requires that we, uh, update our ordinance by February 2nd. Otherwise, ours is no longer enforceable as it is. So this is in order to be in compliance with that law, but also to provide, um, necessary rules, protections, and interpretation of that, uh, as it applies to our local zoning. So what we have done in this, um, uh, process is, and what we've updated that, that we'll take you through tonight, um, just really a lot of wordsmithing, trying to make sure that we have consistency and, and simplification of the terminology and language so that, you know, anybody who's interested in doing this should be able to access this, you know, uh, zoning and, and understand it. So, uh, also we want it to be consistent with the, the breadth of zoning, um, that exists in the city. Um, organized it so that, um, you know, some, some modifications, light modifications, so that things are in proper sections. Um, we do, as you've seen, um, preserve the whereas statements, which is really built around the purpose of the zoning, but we're putting it in the, the body of the amendment so that, uh, it is, um, codified. We'll, we have addressed, uh, the key areas of feedback that we've received so far uh, in, in the previous two joint hearings, as well as the Planning and Development Committee, uh, meeting and, um, clarified the permit process, uh, for each type of ADU. And then, uh, we will address the subjective site plan review criteria through the creation of codifying sign standards within the ordinance for detached ADUs specifically.
Yeah. Okay, so what I will do now is, Polly, if you have the ordinance itself, I'm going to walk through kind of the section by section. What I've tried to do is some kind of color coding on the slides, but I want folks to know that where a lot of things that did not change, I'm going to make sure that, you know, you'll see that more in the, in the, um, text, the, without color. So there will be no color text. But mainly what I wanted folks to see is what does this look like? So the first section on the table of use is, um, really no change. We, we kept that how it was. The only difference on this one is the footnote is that we really made it less wordy and we kind of just referenced the section. That was a lot of the cleanup is instead of putting everything back into every bylaw portion of the ordinance, we're referencing where you should look to for the information. So in this case, you'll seeing in-law apartment is now being replaced. Um, and then the one thing to call out here is that any place where one family, and I, my apologies, but this is not easy to see from the slide version here, but one family has, anywhere there's a P for one family is where we made sure P permitted was for the accessory dwelling unit. And, um, the, the places where like Khan, just for people, C O N, not K H A N. But Khan is actually ag slash Khan. So sometimes we have to do some cleanup, I think, in our zoning because someone was asking me, why, what is the C O N district? So that is the ag slash Khan district. Um, so this is really no main, main change, but this is how we're kind of starting off. This is just wanting to level set, remind everyone where we are. Um, I believe, yes, so this is, any questions on this? I don't mind making this interactive as we go along, or if you guys want to wait a few slides, get a little familiar and then ask a few questions. So otherwise we'll move on. This one is an important one to point out. So the next section where we have to make a change for in-law apartment is section 5E, the list of allowed use table, which is now being replaced, you know, taking out in-law apartment, which was used 109, which is now becoming accessory dwelling unit. The differences here are in the blue text. So just to be absolutely clear, when we first introduced this amendment, and I would say this ordinance, because the amendment is in-law apartment, but we created really a new section, is that we defined it as principal dwelling use without calling out one-family, two-family, multi-family structure. So we did recognize that kind of exposes us. We really wanted to, to now really be clear on what type of structures we're referencing. I do want to point out in full transparency that the state requirements are really for one-family structure. So we've made, um, this is an area for conversation, debate, but this is one area where the transparency needs to be understood that we are providing for the city an opportunity for two-family structures as well. And so that's why that yellow box with red text is to make sure too, that principal dwelling unit now means one-family or two-family use. And then we all concluded in blue, a definition for an attached structure and a detached structure, mainly so that as people go along to the actual bylaw, it's clear that there are two different types talked about. Any questions on that?
Yeah. So you mentioned that the state only requires that to be accessory to one-family use. But isn't that matter of, the state hasn't clarified. That's our, our city attorney's interpretation of what the state says.
Actually, to me, the state definition in chapter three does say single-family.
Yeah. It's the zoning district thing that I think you're referring to that has.
Okay, I thought it was principal dwelling. I was looking for the word principal dwelling.
That's in chapter 1A. Chapter 1A talks about principal dwelling exemptions. They say specifically, they call it single-family use.
Yeah, it does use that.
We could go back to.
I mean, I think that, I think as usual, the state law is not terribly well lit. So maybe that's, it's an ambiguity. It's that one thing in one place, the different thing.
I think that's exactly it because it's in that definition section that you see the term you need to find that out, not in the other section where you might, oh, yes.
Well, writing this ordinance, uh, writing this stuff is not really well-written. And there's a different language.
Yeah.
I don't think that point was addressing either one of, one of my memos previously were Caris's.
That's right, I thought it was Caris.
Caris, I think, yeah. Yeah.
No, I read the chapter right from the NGL, so this one is, yeah, check it. All right, so now moving on to, um, section 6K, dimensional requirements. And again, this was another place where we, in the, um, first, uh, version of the bylaw, we kind of just struck out everything because in-law apartments, their dimensional requirements were that of a single-family use, it's depending on its zoning district. And so what we are just doing to clean it up is we're referencing to see section 6F11 and section 22 to really understand what your zoning district is, and that's if you're one-family or two-family structure. So this was really a simplification, again, referencing different sections. So that's the kind of change here. The other thing I want to point out, and we'll get to it later, but section 6F12, that was the one that references, and I have it there in the yellow box, we're removing the limit of accessory structures on a property. We had to put that in there and there were some good questions asked from Planning and Development Committee. We also said, we seem to be making it a bigger policy change than just addressing ADUs. So we took that out and just deleted that.
So just to put it in regular people's words, so this was saying you can't have a shed and two ADUs on your property. So it's the proliferation of structures in a neighborhood. Um, but we have, uh, as, uh, Councilor Khan said, we've, we've taken that out based on feedback that we've heard. If we want to address something like that from a policy standpoint, we'll take that as a separate amendment.
Thank you. Um, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
What else do we do? Yard requirements. So the other thing that is new is the under, we really want to make sure, so, so this is good to know. Section 6F is already yard requirements for just accessory structure. So it's important to know while we're talking accessory dwelling units, we have accessory structures as well, like the sheds, like the, um, she sheds and caves, you know, whatever. We talked about different types, that there are, there is a section that talks about yard requirements for those. So we want to make sure we went into that section, said unless it's an ADU, you need to go to section 22 in the ordinance. So, so that was a clear point for us to emphasize since what people say belts and suspenders. And I was asking who wears them still, but maybe people do. We gotta have a better term than that. Uh, I think that's all. Great, do you want to walk through?
I can do that.
Okay. So now we're going to get into the ordinance, the bylaw itself for the accessory dwelling units. Section 22A became our whereas in the ordinance. So again, this is good because, and I didn't put them up here, you can read them there, but it was something that when you codify that and if the determinations being made on any of these aspects here, it could remind people to really what the purpose and the intent of this was. So it was good just to keep that and codify that. So now I'm going to section 22B. And, and the important thing here is there's a few things, it's called ADUs allowances and permitting is the purpose of section 22B. The first one is the maximum ADUs permitted on a lot. And here we made it very clear, it's one per primary dwelling unit. And we changed the term from primary dwelling to primary dwelling unit to keep in mind the two-family structure we talked about earlier, that we didn't mean that one per lot means a two-family structure would have to arm wrestle or what we were talking about, who's going to get the, um, accessory structure? So accessory dwelling units. So we then, um, with, and I really want to thank the planning director as well for helping us. This is where you have to work together to think, how do you really cover those things? So instead we have primary dwelling unit. It's also, um, allowed uses is one family and that's use 101. So we're also referencing the use table, so it ties back to what we're referencing, or a two-family use 102. And then again, I think the planning department, you know, make sure no variances allowed for multi-family use, like emphasize that. I know one could say, well, if you're not mentioning it, of course it means you're not going to do it. But some things need, are worth kind of, um, letting people know definitely not. Any discussion on, well, maybe we could open up later. So I know everyone's mulling over one-family, two-family use.
Can I just ask a question? So does this mean that a two-family can have two accessory dwellings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, and we're going to go a little bit more into that when we get to the next section on the two-family exceptions. And actually, we're going to see it right now. So required zoning review and approval, section two. So we had this before. The text is not in a different color because we did have in-law apartments maybe converted to an ADU, but we want to remind people, you do still need to go through a zoning review, review to ensure the compliance to 22, um, bylaw. But expansions may be allowed to add an ADU number B if they meet dimensional controls of the relevant zoning district. So we want to also kind of create a distinction if you comply, in compliance versus not in compliance. So what you'll see here is the first part of B is talking about the situation where you are in compliance. So for one-family lot, if you are in compliance, an attached and detached is permitted as of right. And that is a state requirement. And not, yeah, except, yeah, for the one-family, remember I talked one-family. The C for a two-family lot, an attached conforming ADU is permitted as of right. A detached ADU is only permitted by special permit. And the reason we're able to put the special permit in there is because a single-family use is the only one the state is requiring. We're putting out to two-family, therefore we have the flexibility and the right to make it special permit. We did not do that for the attached though, and that could be part of the debate. D is any non-conformance, it's a require, it's a reminder. I think most, many of you, especially you guys know, any non-conformance requires a special permit for non-conformities. A new non-conformance requires a variance. And that too was previously already there. So what you're seeing in red are the new things in this amended version we're bringing to you. Questions here?
Just, and in the text that you sent out, Andy, I mean, that we're seeing on, on section 2D where it talks about the special permit, uh, for non-comformities by the designated special permit granting authority is what it says? And, and so who is that? Shouldn't we just state there?
Just say it. Yeah, sorry, just to clarify, uh, it is with the ZBA we're talking about for the most part, but we can't forget that the Planning Board has been granted special permit granting authority in the downtown overlay district. So there's a reason for using the more generic terminology, SPGA, rather than saying just specifically zoning work deals. And actually frankly, on a go-forward basis, if you try to do cleanup of the ordinance and things like that, when we have situations like that, it might be better for us to use, um, the typical reference point there. I realize that depending on your context, it might be more or less difficult to navigate and understand what's happening there. But the reason for that is we have to catch both of those because we're, it depends where it's located. Is which one is the applicable, right, special permit granting authority?
On, on C, is it correct that first phrase that they proposed ADU really means an attached ADU? Is allowed by right?
For, for C?
For C.
We're, we're, we're making that.
I know, but what I'm saying is that the second sentence says detached requires a special permit.
We're, we're adding that.
Right, but what, I guess what I'm saying is, does this mean that a proposed attached is allowed as a right?
Yes.
Yes.
So shouldn't we put the word attached in there?
Uh, in the, in the.
Item C, a proposed ADU is, is allowed as a right. It almost sounds like you're starting by saying.
Oh.
ADU is allowed right. I could say detached requires a special permit, almost sounds contradictory.
Okay.
So I think adding the word attached as the third word in that sentence.
Got it, got it. This is on the ordinance itself?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Does anyone make a note of that?
Yeah, do we want to, I, I'll defer to you as, as you're going through the slides. Did you want to flip to that or did you want to, uh?
Yeah, maybe can we, yeah, let's toggle to it. That way everyone can follow along, just since we are going to make an edit. I'd like everyone to kind of follow along and we could do a red line now.
But it turns, it is, it's in the sentence, it's a little longer, a little farther in.
Yeah.
And either within or attached there too.
It would be the third.
There, it's just misplaced in the sentence.
Oh.
Yeah.
But I was thinking, I think they're, in the wordsmithing, I got flipped.
You've already, you've already defined the word attached ADU. So I think you could almost delete whether attached or detached. Well, whether, whether within or attached there too, just put the word attached. Because then you're distinguishing between attached and detached.
Could you highlight what sentence we're talking about?
Which I want to see.
Very beginning of it.
Okay.
So if you said a proposed attached ADU, to get rid of the either within or.
Oh, yeah, okay, sure.
I think it's just easier to read.
Sure, I, I think you're right. Hi, I'm, I'm always about simplicity if we could. Yeah, I agree, I agree. I always want to use within or attached there too. I'm just. Within there too, I know. Is someone making that edit or?
Uh, just make a note here and then we'll.
Okay.
In case we have.
Great, anything else on that or? Okay.
Uh, Councilor Donahue, you can raise your hand.
Oh, yeah. Yes, Councilor Donahue.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify to make sure I heard correctly because I, I can't follow along with what you are, you have, you know, on screen. Um, so with the special permit, is that, that for the detached? Did I hear correctly that that's for, um, or maybe I misheard or wasn't sure, uh, if that's for the single-family or for just for the two or multi-family?
Two-family only.
Okay, so that doesn't apply to a single-family because.
Yeah, the special permit is only being required for the two-family lot.
And that, and, but only specifically for the detached?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's what I heard correctly. I just, um, it's hard, you know, like, because I can't really follow along with what you guys have in front of you. So, um, thank you. I just want to get that clarification. That's great, thank you.
No, good point. That, so we'll now go to the next slide, moving along. So, yeah, so I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Harmon because that second part talked about.
Give my, my co-sponsor a break and I will, as you will all know, take advantage of pretty pictures and colors, uh, the easy part. So, um, this property, um, so there, you're going to see two illustrations that show, um, different scenarios for the placement and the, um, review required for different types of potential ADUs. So we do the bird's eye and then we'll do a cross-section next. So if you follow along, um, going from, uh, we'll sort of move from the bottom of the picture, which is the street to the back where there's a sort of blob that's a pool. Um, so the build box is the dashed purple line. Um, that, uh, sets required, uh, is where the required setbacks kick in. So anything that falls outside of that will trigger additional review. But things within that, going from the bottom to the top, for example, the first green box that you see uh, would be an as-of-right interior or conforming addition, um, conforming detached on a, a one-family lot. So that would be, uh, as-of-right, um, you perceive that. Um, if you wanted to moving, moving further back, the, the blue box, sort of underneath the other green box, um, is conforming detached on a two-family lot. Um, because if this were a two-family home, it would be a detached unit, that would require a special permit. Um, in the back left, uh, the orange is the use or expansion of an existing non-conforming principal or accessory structure, in this case, a garage. Um, but that garage is outside the build box, though it's non-conforming. If we wanted to make it into an ADU, we would need a special permit for non-conformities. That would be the ZBA. Uh, and then in the far right, the red box is a proposed new non-conforming structure because it's outside the build box, uh, which would require a variance. I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, moving to the next one and then we can pause if anybody has questions. Um, so this is the, sort of, not the same property, but a, a cross-section. Um, and you see in the gray in the middle is the, the primary residence. Um, as-of-right, sort of moving from the interior out. Uh, we have two green boxes. One is an interior, uh, ADU or, uh, an attached, uh, ADU outside the, the main structure. Both of those would be considered as-of-right, uh, because they're conforming within the sort of same purple lines that we saw before on either side represent the, the build box in this scenario. Um, moving further to the right, um, we have, uh, an orange box, which is special permit for non-conformities, uh, because this, in our example, is an existing non-conforming structure, say the garage that we looked at in the last example. Um, the red, uh, would be a proposed new non-conforming structure and that would therefore require variance. On the left, we have an as-of-right green, uh, ADU, uh, that is, uh, detached on a one-family lot. This, uh, requires no special permit. However, the blue version would be a conforming detached on, if we were to say the grave building in this example is now a two-family, um, that would then require the special permit. I get that, right?
Yes.
So I guess just to pause if anybody has questions, neither version, if you flip back.
Question, um, and maybe for Andy or for Jim. Um, if you have a, an existing accessory structure that conforms, well, first of all, may I ask if this is, this is a possibility? An existing accessory structure can conform to the setback requirements for accessory structures, but not to, not to the setbacks for principal structures, is that?
If it's going to be as an ADU, it has to be upgraded or it has to comply with the primary.
Right, so, so I guess what I'm wondering is, if you did get that conversion, would that be a truly a, that would be creating a new non-conformity, right? So that would require a variance?
I would see that as a new.
So, so you're not, you're not, there's, there's no existing non-conformity, right? You're creating a new non-conformity.
Because as an accessory structure today, like a small shed, it's not non-conforming for that, but it becomes non-conforming for the purposes of an ADU, which has to comply with the primary setbacks. Jennifer, did you?
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance essentially creates the non-conformity.
It creates a non-conformity?
It by requiring the primary setbacks, yeah, to the, to the.
The conversion of the, the change of use creates the non-conformity. So you, so in that case, so there's actually another.
We need another color?
Is it, well, yeah. So it, so you'd have a, you have a, a shed that is not where a garage, let's say a shed, but a garage is non-conforming. And converting that to or expanding that as a, as a ADU is a special permit for non-conformities?
Yeah, we could add sort of another box to show that, but it effectively becomes, yeah.
So it's just, just so it's good, some, some of these will require variances, which is a higher standard than a special permit. Uh, in terms of demonstrating your, the reason for.
The reason for granting it? Yeah, I mean, the variance is obviously the harder one, but yeah. Did, did Jennifer, did you want anything or?
I, I believe that the ordinance allows for the conversion that you're contemplating and if we have to tweak the language, it is the intent of the ordinance to allow it through a special permit for non-conformities rather than through a variance.
Okay.
And that is the orange box that's up there. That is the garage that's already non-conforming.
No, I'm talking about the garage that's conforming.
It's can, say that garage conforms to the existing accessory structure setback.
Yeah.
But by putting, superimposing the ADU use on it, it becomes non-conforming. The ordinance allows for that through the special permit for non-conformities process rather than through a full variance process.
It's, it's not clear, but you're the person who interprets it, so.
We, we have, we can make note of that and make certain that it's the ordinance that is allowing for that. Uh, slightly different relief as you're doing.
Yeah, if, sorry, if I could, but this is partly reading several sections of the zoning ordinance together, but I think what Jennifer is also pointing out is you also have to understand, in some cases, understand the larger context of how special permits, special permits, non-conformities and variances are dealt with in Commonwealth. And a lot of that has to do with the other section, our typical administrative section that deals with the special permits and variances. So that is essentially going back to your point, I think, underlying is that's still consistent with the state, you know, uh, framework that we have here in this report.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to allow that for a special permit. I just don't think it's clear, I think.
Gotcha. I think in, in essence, this would be, if I'm not mistaken, this would essentially be clarifying, essentially adding language, franchise to your, or in a, or clarifying here essentially something that's already captured in this amendment, the ordinance, as is written. Uh, but it helps to clarify here something better perhaps. It's not necessarily that it isn't covered, I guess, and I know, you know, to Bert and Jennifer, she wants to chime in further, but I think the, the point that I think she and I would probably make is that it is covered here legally in the language. Um, it's just that you may not see it as obviously in this ADU section because it's addressed by the, the other applicable sections of the special permit, non-conformities, what's being triggered. So I guess what Rick, I think, is saying, and I'm not missing, I mean, is we could add a bullet here to clarify. So I guess what Rick, I think, is saying, and unless I'm missing anything, is we could add a bullet here to clarify that, but I'm not convinced that that's missing, uh, from the way that this mechanically works. Jennifer, I'm not sure if you were able to follow.
So is it, it seems like the only place where you actually talk about special permit, non-conformities, unless, unless I'm missing it somewhere, is attached ADUs. Do I see it where it's, where is it as a detached? Is it down in the sea?
It's for attached and detached. So that section is in, section 22B.
Yeah.
Is where it applies attached and detached.
Right, because what it says is, I see in item D is what I'm looking at.
Oh, okay.
And it says, "A proposed ADU within a one-family or two-family structure that extends an existing non-conforming should require grant of a special permit for non-conformities." I don't see any that applies to a non-conforming accessory.
You're just saying, just put in the word accessory in order to.
Yeah, I mean, however you want to do it. It's just, it looks to me like right now that you can only give that special permit for non-conformities in an attached ADU.
Yeah, I, I, I'm perfectly fine adding it to me. It just sounds like adding the phrase in there, you know, structure, two-dimensional structure or accessory.
I understand what the intent was, just to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
That's a reasonable point.
Great. Who wrote that down? Somebody?
I did.
Thank you.
Uh, back to the slides or?
Yes, so back and going along to.
I have a question. Okay, so you just go. So on the two-family, as of right, you can do two ADUs. As long as you meet all the fact requirements, right?
And they're attached, um.
Yes.
They're attached.
Yeah.
Yeah. Either inside, within, or attached is as a right for two-family lot.
Okay, but, and then by special permit on two-family lot, you can do up to two ADUs?
So one per unit, so they could have, they can have two, yeah.
Either one could be either attached or detached, but the detached requires a special permit.
Okay, and so if they're detached and they need setbacks from side property, back property, they need dimensional requirement between the two?
So we do.
Well, they have to be separated as from the front structure to ten feet and.
Then from each other?
Jennifer, do you want to speak there from each other? Uh, we actually have the stipulation in the primary structure.
Yeah. It's a big question. Um, I can look as, I believe we have a provision that speaks to separation of accessory structures on a lot. I mean, to look at that section. If we don't and we'd like to clarify, we certainly have that opportunity to clarify.
The other, the other thing I would add to that too is, I mean, because it's a discretionary review by the board and I think the board might, both the applicant and the board, I think would benefit from having some flex, a little bit more latitude or flexibility to look at that. Um, to me, it's not necessarily problematic to not have a specific dimension called out in here because each lot in that scenario might be a little bit different. Um, so given the fact that it is reviewed by the board, um, that also adds another belt of suspenders, if you will. Um, that there's also, there's not only flexibility to look at the context and see what might be, you know, flux around there, but also to say, oh, there's something that's problematic.
That's a good point though. Yeah, so we'll take a look and circle back. Oh, yeah, Councilor Donahue.
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry, I can't hold myself. Um, so is it the intent that we're trying to take a two-family house and make it a four-family house with the same dimensions of a two-family house? Because that's exactly what this is.
No, I, I don't, so.
What is?
Well, I mean, I think.
Two-family house. Right? All I have to do is split the twos into fours and now I bypassed our multifamily zoning and I have a four-family house. Is that the intent? Wasn't the intent of the state. The state was just to attack R1. So now we're attacking R1 and R2. And I'm just asking if that's the intent of the ordinance is to allow, uh, owners and developers to now bypass our multifamily house.
Well, I'd be curious. I guess I didn't think of it that way, but I can see.
Yeah, I think that's back to us, Councilor Conover, this is back to some policy choice questions of, is it beyond the state statute and to what degree that's what it is.
Yeah, I mean, that's debatable. Not, I don't think our intention was to create definitely a neighborhood.
But that's what you would have been set.
Well, but that's why I said this is a policy decision that we can talk about. That's why I put it in red. So our intention was to kind of get into this debate. So let's talk about, if we want to talk about the one-family, two-family, I would love to hear it. In the planning and development committee, we talked about it there. So that's where, um, the idea was, you know, we originally said we could just keep it one-family. And actually, in the joint hearing too, we talked about two families. So there were a couple of meetings we talked about it, but I'm open to hearing what people, what others think.
I'm kind of curious about whether I, I don't think we know the answer to this, but it seems to me that it would be, with a limitation on floor area, it would seem to be that we, there wouldn't be very many two-families that this would work. Because the accessory dwelling unit has to be half, no more than half the floor area of what's left over. So.
That could be pretty big though, right? So if we look at, I mean, I don't know.
If you have a two-family, I mean, it could be pretty big for a one-family. For a two-family, you, I mean, this would be like a 2,700 square foot unit in a two-family home. There are, I mean, there are some. I'm not sure how many there are.
Yeah, I don't know either, but because I think the way, the size, so it's 900 square feet. Or like you said, that, um, half of the gross floor area square footage of the primary dwell.
Yes.
Which in a two-family structure, we define permanent dwelling units.
Yes.
And I think what the clarification is, are we talking about the structures half for that unit, which is what I was thinking, is.
It does the principal dwelling unit.
Yes, so that's what, okay, so then that would be.
So I'm thinking.
Half of that one, yeah, so.
But so, so what would be the smallest legal dwelling unit? Square feet, square footage?
For the accessory or for the primary?
Well, just under the building code.
For, for the accessory for the.
For a dwelling.
You mean accessory entire?
After zoning entire.
Smallest dwelling unit can be, and I actually asked the building commissioner this question, is the 70 square feet that is required for a bedroom? Because if you can fit, if you can fit long, I mean, this is under building code, there may be health codes that require more. But the building code says that you can squeeze an entire living unit. Your toilet can be in the same space for one person. We would also look to health codes and all of that. So we don't specify a minimum within that. We simply say that you must comply with health regulations and building code regulations. But we have been having that conversation within the city between the departments. I think to your other question about the size of some of these units, um, because I've looked at quite a few of them throughout the city. Um, we, we do have some very large two-family structures in certain districts throughout the city. Um, larger perhaps than some families can utilize on a regular basis, especially some people that are aging in place. Um, and I do believe that was the intent of the state to sort of allow this greater accommodation. So if you have a 3,000 or even a 2,000 square foot unit of a, of a half, you know, a two-family, um, you could take from within that a small apartment that might even exist because maybe it was a servants apartment at one point.
Yeah.
And then utilize it as this rental.
I guess my point was more that from what you were saying, that it is feasible to take a 900 square foot principal dwelling unit and create a 300.
No, no, I, I think it is.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just asking that, right? There's a question. You take a 900 square, under this ordinance, we're going to get a 900 square foot dwelling unit and create a 300 square foot accessory dwelling unit and a 600 square foot principal dwelling. And to my mind, that doesn't change the impact. I mean, you're going to have smaller, you have fewer people in each unit. So it seems to me it's going to be no impact to do that. So I think the greater impact would be in the larger units.
Yeah, and, and the other thing I do want to say, because two-family is not in the state requirements, I think one of the reasons we included, we had a good conversation is to allow, um, you know, if there's already, we talked a lot, the two-family units, sometimes some of the large ones already have like a little, um, like in-law apartment, whatever you want to say, already have like a section that can be sectioned off. But what we could do, because there's no state requirement for them, is we could also even give it a different, um, maximum square footage. You know, we went by the state definition of 900 square feet or the lesser of 900 square feet or the, the gross floor square footage of the home. For the two-family homes, we could even say a smaller size. We don't have to give the same and we could say a maximum of 700 or half, uh, whatever is less. So just something we could do. We don't have to keep the same definition for the single family. We could, to, to talk to the point that Councilor McCauley brought up, we could control that size and we could do it very fairly with the two-family not get in trouble.
Councilor Donahue would raise her as well. Councilor Donahue?
Yes, thank you. Um, so a couple of points I wanted to kind of get, I guess, a little clarity and make some points on. Um, but I was under the impression, and maybe this is where I need some clarification, that um, it would be, you know, the size of the, the ADU would be either nine, you know, the, the half of the principal dwelling unit size or the 900 square feet, but I was sort of thinking that, and maybe this is wrong, um, but is the intent not to, you know, have the, the maximum be the 900 square feet? Like, it's either half the size of the principal or 900 square feet, like maximum? Is that not the intent?
Yeah, the, the words are that it can't be bigger than 900 square feet. I think it's.
Okay, so that being said, um, because I just want to make sure that I was very clear on that because it was, it was starting to sound a little confusing. Um, is that to, uh, the Ward Five council's point, um, I don't envision, you know, the two-family homes doubling up in their, their, you know, or doubling down, as it were, um, on, uh, these much smaller accessory units, like being the same as putting four dwelling units on a lot, like in that they're just two different animals that, you know, one is much smaller, uh, half the size or less, right? So, um, you know, I, and also, um, I don't know how many, I'd be really curious as to how many lots in the city could even accommodate with, with the requirements, um, too, right? So, I mean, I think there's going to be very few one-offs. I don't know about development becoming like something that's going to run rampant with developers wanting to do this because, A, I don't really know there's that much real estate to continue developing, um, in that manner for single and two-family homes. Um, I mean, I, I, you know, just real estate in the city, I don't, I don't know how much more, uh, you know, forest and tree space we can sell off or remove or whatever, but, um, I just don't see it happening. So I, you know, I don't, I don't have this fear that all of a sudden, you know, we're going to have like four houses on one lot. Um, I think that if anything, we'll see some folks with the ability to do this trying to do it in a thoughtful way, right? And, and within the parameters of the rules that we put forth, but, um, I, 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 I'd be a little less, um, panicked feeling, I guess, is the way it sounded coming out, uh, of, of the Ward Five counselor. Um, so that's kind of my two cents on that. I mean, it just, it seems reasonable with the many parameters that are going to be in place. Um, that it's not going to be happening rampantly, um, in those, in those situations, right? So so far, I think this is, this has been really good and well thought out and has taken a ton of the public comment and questions from both the, the counselors and the board, like pretty, pretty well to, um, to the point and I appreciate it. So I just, you know, um, don't want to belabor the point, but I do really appreciate all of it so far. Thank you.
I, I do want to speak to something that is important that I'd like that Councilor McCauley is bringing awareness to. Is the state requirement for ADUs is saying that there is not an owner residency requirement anymore? So the other thing we can do is impose an owner requirement for the two-family structure if we wanted to. So I'm just saying that there are, because we have more, again, the two-family is something we're throwing out there more just because of providing the opportunity for others. I mean, if we think about it, there, there are people with two-family who have own half of a two-family that might want to do this. So we were trying to be more fair and we thought that seemed like a good place to expand it to. However, if there are concerns, we have so much more flexibility to go outside the state requirements if we so choose to. So I, I want to just make that clear.
Yeah, no, I actually, that raises a question for me, um, because I, I guess I missed that part, so thank you. Um, can we, I, I mean, and not just can we, but like, I guess I'd say I would, uh, I, what I would not want to see happen with now knowing this, right? With the state removing that requirement of non-residency. Um, I would not want to see a situation where you have two tenants sort of, you know, unwittingly, uh, you know, ending up living on a, in, in, on a lot, you know, because a developer or whatever, whoever is not present, it just seems a little, that, that seems like a different animal, like than the owner, you know, being in, in one of the other, like the primary or the ADU themselves, right? Like, and profiting from renting out to one or the other. That makes sense to me, but it doesn't make sense to me to have a non occupying owner, like, able to do that, like, am I understanding that correctly? Because that just seems like you're just going to have a lot of developers that already own rentals, planting ADUs in all their backyards.
Yeah, Councilor Donahue, let's let, oh, Director Port speak and then we have.
Thank you, yes.
And, uh, Planning Board member Roger's hands up, so.
Um, I mean, I definitely agree with. I definitely agree with Rick's earlier notion that it's actually much more limiting the number of these that could really be permitted in that way because of the spatial constraints we have, particularly in the dense areas of the city, um, which some of these are. But, um, the other thing, I think in terms of framing, the framing of the question itself, it seems to suggest, remember that multifamily is different than single or two-family. Um, that's a larger order of magnitude and I, and I think it's a reasonable question to ask in the context of, of, you know, what multiple units looks like. Uh, but I think it's also worth considering that when the legislature was looking at this, they remember they're tying it directly to a primary principal use. So this is an accessory dwelling unit, so that's the reason for the size limitation. The, you know, this is, remember that this is a smaller unit subordinate to and always has to be attached to that primary, you know, unit of activity on the lot. So it's not necessarily the same order of magnitude, even though I understand exactly the question. It isn't necessarily the same order of magnitude as a true multifamily, if you will, at the end of the day, because it's required to be smaller and it's required to always be, um, you know, attached to or subordinate to that, that primary use of there. Um, that being said, I understand the context of the question and that's a policy debate, obviously, I diverted it out. Um, at the end of the day, we're playing, but I, I don't have an issue here in context. I don't think it's a reasonable latitude and I think that the spatial constraints themselves will be somewhat limiting to the, to the point where when those things are happening in a tighter constraint, there's going to be a board review where it's not going to be allowed under zoning.
I think it's also, um, the parking is going to be a restriction.
Yes, and it's.
I guess, just a question, is a half-house considered a single-family?
That's a great question, yeah.
That's, I wanted to let you know, because that was part of the conversation in the planning and development committee, rare this name of. We have a lot of half-houses in Newburyport where the parcel line actually goes down the middle of what looks like a two-family structure. It is actually a single-family structure. And each of those would be.
Or on each of those lots.
Each on its own parcel would be permitted, its own detached accessory structure, the, the dimensional controls. Therefore, the question was asked, what about that same property, that same home that doesn't happen to have the parcel line down the middle? And, and I think that's when they said, let's bring it to the larger group. Let's, let's offer this for it. So that is considered a single-family and therefore all the single-family rules apply. And they look the same on paper. And so I think they have, the sponsors were trying to treat them the same.
And they, they function the same.
They function exactly, but the, um, I also want to reiterate, the parking constraint really will be limiting in, in most of the dense neighborhoods. Um, none of them are within half mile of the train and they probably won't be able to provide the parking. So you're really only going to see this in the larger, um, zoning districts where they, with.
I think Councilor Wright has a hand.
So I just want to go back to, um, historically with in-law apartments. Um, a, a lot of permitted in-law apartments. Um, a a lot of permanent in-law apartments have become unpermitted. Because the familial relationship has has gone away. So in order to for those properties to have. To be in compliance with the zoning, they've had to remove the stove or do something to to move to to remove them. I I think the benefit of considering multi-families or two families is that you can, you can recreate. Those, um, those, um, units that have become unpermitted. By considering allowing two families to go back to the in-law apartment without the familial relationship being. So so that to me is the biggest benefit of expanding this beyond single families to two families. Is that we can, we can, we can recover. A lot of those in-law apartments that have fallen off the books because, you know, the 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 relative no longer lives in those houses. And they're and they're basically. You know. Ready to be an accessory dwelling unit. By the stroke of a pen, they were they were considered. So. So for me, expanding it beyond single family to two family allows people with a relatively small cost. To 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 move a a an interior unit back to being where it can be rented out and be an accessory.
I have that question. More comments maybe a little bit? So when thinking about the two family. I think that if it like off the top of my head, I think about lots of two families that are non-conforming lots to begin with. Dense, they're largely the south end where this just wouldn't work. So I think that would avoid some of the crowding that some people would be afraid of. And when I think about why a developer. Want to jump on this bandwagon, the developers don't develop properties to keep them as multi-unit. They develop them as condos. And that I feel like would just wipe this out anyways, right? Because you're not going to be able to do this in a condo, even if the condo is without. Without common space and has really designated space. Be a condo issue and you're not speaking to condos. So I think the developer is. Is not going to be as attracted to these because they're looking to divide and conquer.
The management side of it isn't there.
It's not there because they don't want to hold on to these properties. No one's going to want to renovate, develop, put these on. I mean, I don't say no one, but. It's going to be a much smaller pool. Um, so I think that that again is a reason that. The concern isn't as great on the two families. And it it wouldn't, to me, become this like big catastrophe. Crowding in order.
Council McCully has a hand up.
Uh, thanks. I'm gonna kind of end up that. Sorry. To your point, I I do think if we go back, right? I think, um, on two families and these aren't the same lots. We go inside. And I think it's losing that. But that's not my question. My question is around existing, um, in-law apartments. Uh, as the council had noted, that some of them have been lost, some of them are still around, etc. But I don't think it's as easy as stroke of pen because I do think that some of them have removed their kitchens. Um, and have shared, have shared certain areas. So development investment would have to happen. Uh, I noticed there's no, uh, just says it would have to go through review. Uh, but I'm not sure it would have to. I'm not sure that in the ordinance, um, you left it out specifically, or if you want to add it back in. Specific to has to comply with, um, ADU requirements going forward. Uh, from the conversion from one to the other, because it definitely would be an investment cost. Associated from converting it may be impossible. Yeah, and and I don't want to add anything else. I have to say, from the building code perspective, obviously, there might be something in there, you know, needing to, I need to redo something, so that sort of thing, but. I think Jennifer is on the minister, effectively in every case here, the ADU, regardless of what type it is. Has to be reviewed by the zoning administrator to verify that it complies. And that's the point that it becomes eligible or if it needs a permit or. That's what it becomes. It becomes an actual ADU. It's not an ADU unless it's been reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator. For that compliance. So in this case, where something might be non-compliant for some reason, that's where it needs to have that review. Uh, or in this case, I'm going to be assigned to the board, the ZDA. So so just if you might follow, so if it, uh, is an existing in-law and it stays in law. Right? And then something happens. Right? Um, that they couldn't just rent it. They would have to go through the review process.
Yes.
To be able to bring it up to conformity, right? Get along with it.
Correct.
And and zoning enforcement is the path to go to that. Uh, and you think you've got it covered in in this ordinance from convergent? Yeah, especially something and it says explicitly in here, every ADU has to be reviewed by the zoning administrator and yeah, Jennifer can chime in if she ever missed her, she wants to add.
I guess. I have enforced in my, in the past few years, several ADUs that sort of. Familial relationship has disappeared and someone has rented it out. That's, that's one thing that people, neighbors do watch. And so I have enforced a number of those. I imagine if someone were to convert a former in-law apartment without that review, that I would get that phone call. And we have had success because there is a path to making it legal. Um, so most people have sort of willingly complied. Thankfully, our existing in-law ordinance also had that nine hundred, seven hundred square foot rule within it. So it makes. Almost all of these will easily comply. Um, and they have to have single apartment space as well. So whether they have the kitchens or they're to code from a bathroom standpoint, that's, that's building code.
So we'll move, just to get through the rest. This could move pretty quick, I think, but good conversation, taking this back and we can. I think that's part of the deliberation we'll end on, but to walk through now the section twenty-two C. Uh, standards, let me know if you want to chime in at all, but I'll just quickly go through that this. Anything, what I did here is I I went through each section. I put what it's addressing and what the description is in red. Are things we added? The state requirements column shows you what the state's already saying. When it says no requirement, that means the state's not saying anything there, but we are. So, um, for unit size, we just talked about that, the lesser of what we talked about nine square foot or half the floor area. Um, no more than two bedrooms is something we put in. That's not a state item. We added that. Uh, setbacks in terms of compliance with zoning district. That is in the state's language. Um, similar to that, we're just reemphasizing lot coverage and open space, but that's also defined when we talk in our zoning districts of that. And we're just reminding it here. It's going to be the same as a principal dwelling unit. Um, what we did add is we already had the entrance from the state definition where they talked about, you know, the interior door. Um, having a common interior door, but for detached ADUs, we did add, um, that exterior entrance shall be accessible from a path or walkway. Um, and then lighting too is something we added that the state never mentioned anything is that all exterior lighting. Should be designed, installed and maintained to be shielded and downcast to avoid light trespass onto adjacent lots. Moving along, along to the next one. Any comments?
Yeah, I just don't know what the language is in the ordinance, so forgive me, but I think it should be tied to, um, detached units.
Lighting maybe?
Yeah.
Oh, I put that for both.
I think here it applies to all the ADUs you're suggesting it, we applied it when the detached, I mean.
I I think the detached are the ones that have, are going to have the major impact on, um, on this, on surrounding, on the abutters. I don't see it as much, as much of an issue for, um, an interior unit.
Interior or expansion too. That's why I kind of.
Either.
Okay, I could move that if both don't.
Because you want it to look more like the home. You just want to hide this thing, right? So to have it conform with the exterior calm, I think would be.
Okay.
Sorry. I don't have any objection, if you will, and in general, I think in general, you'd still want to. Prevent the light trespassing into adjacent lot regardless of where the ADU is or where the primary dwelling unit is, and there is still a desire or concern about. Preventing glare. And if so, then listen, business, nothing.
Do we have no lighting requirements in the zoning?
Well, it, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
If I may, where we don't have any existing ability to control residential to residential, uh, light spillage. This, um, yes, this does take it a step farther, but it provides some measure of control that I think we wish we had. For other, um, other aspects.
But but my my point is that, um, you can have a portion of the of the home that is subject to this. Lighting and the other, the other part of the house is not.
It's true, but I'm just, I'm saying that's where we do not, in answer to the question, we do not currently have. Any regulation that prevents light spill from one residential property to an adjacent residential.
If you will, I admit the equivalency isn't, isn't there at the present moment, once I hear, but I definitely think it kind of referred to you on the policy question the other day, but. I think because it seems to me a policy you'd want to carry across the board, something like that, to me, it makes more sense to leave that in here and then have a small fight. To Jennifer's point, I think we add that to the ordinance generally to cover the residential areas in the same way that we already think about commercial areas. Why would we not want to prevent the glare on the residential property, sponsored adjacent property? To me, that seems it should be across the board. So I, that's the reason why I don't want to add it here because I think. We have some other things we're going to be bringing forward for the next year.
I don't know how you enforce this.
If if I may, I'm sorry, I I do have my hand up and I really do want to speak to this. Is that, is it?
Council Donnie.
Okay. Is that okay? Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so a couple of things on this. Um. I definitely agree with, uh, with the at-large counselor here that, um. You would be creating something very inconsistent with what we currently have. I I do agree it should be in place for the detached units, of course, but for the. I'm sorry, the detached units, but for the attached units, um. It's, it it begs a bigger question because we don't have a policy in place that addresses it for. The principal dwelling. Um, and that is actually something that. Um, really is a very different conversation than the one we're having tonight about ADUs. And I just want to. Make that really clear. Like, I understand the wanting to be able to have some controls over something we currently don't have control over in other areas, but. It 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 is a bigger question that, um, is a huge policy question and and like, do we want to have that kind of? Control over what, how, you know, people are lighting their homes and properties. Um, without fully understanding needs because people have different lighting needs. Um, so that's why it's a bigger policy question to me and has come up for me in the past and I do have, you know, um. Some thoughts on it. So, you know. To, again, to the at-large council's point, I think for consistency. And to not create something that is a little bit awkward because you will have. Part of a dwelling having to comply to, you know, a certain regulation where the rest of the building is not, and and also. Creating that confusion for residents because we don't have that in place for the rest of. You know. Residences, um, and and neighbors. So it just. It's a, it's a kind of a big can of worms you're opening there, but I I I appreciate the director's wanting to be consistent in a different way, but. It's creating an inconsistency that you might not inadvertently, uh, realize. So just thank you on that, uh, consideration.
Thank you, Council Donnie. Weren't we also trying to avoid embedding any kind of policy into the ADUs? And I would say lighting is probably, in this case, I think it probably should just be to the detached.
Okay, so yeah, so some, I said this before in previous meetings, I I don't want to slip anything into the ADU ordinance that has going to have a larger impact. On everybody without having that, uh, the full transparency or. Let's, you know, let's, let's talk about that as a policy issue, uh, generally across the zoning, but. Let's not slip it in right here, even when we don't need.
Okay, yeah, I could move that, but I do want to let people know expansions will happen and expansions of lighting because you're renting out to somebody, they might. I'm just saying, I do think that we should take this up because it is a a valid issue. Around with with the light spillage. So yeah, so I'll move this to the detached and then later we can chat other policy type changes, so.
And if I may, just one closing thought, because obviously wherever this gets continued to, and I totally understand the idea of, uh, looking at this sort of citywide. Um, I do think that just generally speaking, it's worth referencing here, realizing that this is really only talking about the the final phrasing here, trespass onto adjacent lots. It's not really intended to, and it's not mechanically working to limit the lighting so much on the property. Obviously, it's meant, you know, when you start with the shoebox fixture, it's really talking about. Preventing the abutters from having to take on that lighting. So it just in context, it's not so much, uh, you know, intended to or going to have the effect of including someone from having lighting on the property. It's meant to protect any abutters that are there.
And and one thing to add too, um, most within have a common interior door or something. New entrance ways may be created and and keep that in mind that this is different than a primary dwelling. So I don't think we're actually. Making a policy change. We're saying if you're now adding. A new portion where someone else is not going to come through your house, so the entrance way will move. I think the more I think about it, would like to keep this there as a protective measure. Depending on if that entrance way is facing an adjacent lot, lot, given that you might be in your build box still. But if they're putting a light for the person to be able to see, it could, it could be some, so just know that there is maybe some reasons where this would well apply.
I wouldn't follow my sword of this. I just, I know with working with Jennifer, we've seen this issue arise before in residential districts, not just commercial, and I think that was the reason why, you know, for us it made sense to have it in there. Understand a lot of your question, leave that to you, I think, but.
Okay, yeah, we'll still run by it. Planning Board, you guys can put in your memo what you think, if you even care, but, all right, we'll keep going. Or if you have an opinion on it, is what I mean. Um, but for now, we'll make a note to move into detached from the conversation. So parking, moving along, parking, uh, we already had that one additional spot. We did add one of the comments we got in our, our first joint hearing was to make sure that no variances are granted. So we added that. Um, there is no requirement on the state level. That's why I had that column, um, I noted that. So, uh, the next one, the parking waiver, nothing's changed there. The only thing is. That, and I meant to actually cross out from transit, we in the ordinance took out the M B R T A bus, um, bus stop. And instead, we're really just calling transit is really the M B T A commuter rail. Uh, and then the other exemption for the parking, the parking waiver is if the unit listed, um, in the subsidized housing inventory. The no changes from before. The Plum Island overlay district, no change there and the prohibition of ADUs being used as S T R U's. Is also still in there. So no changes to those sections. Moving on, and then these two, nothing has changed here, reinforcing that they cannot be sold separately. And that they cannot ownership being transferred through condo docs, as we mentioned before. And the sanitation and building code need to be compliant. And nothing changed either from when you first started. So moving to the next section, this is where we, all of this is new, just to kind of start off with that. So this is what has replaced the site plan review. And this is only design standards for detached ADUs. So the first one is related to the height regulations. Um, the addition, and like I said, all of this is new. So what we added is that, you know, it's given that this is going to be secondary to the primary. It's really that the height should be the lesser of the existing height of the principal dwelling. Or we originally had twenty feet. We debated that because we, um, we put twenty-five here, twenty-five feet, but it's the lesser of. But the 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 reason for twenty-five feet that came up in committee was if you're going to be adding to like a garage or an existing accessory structure. And if you're trying to add something, depending on how much, um, you know, how much that space will be, how tall your garage is. That twenty-five feet, uh, seem to be more, what's the word?
Flexible.
Yeah.
Reasonable for.
It's two stories in the room.
Yeah.
Yet. So, um, again, policy level, that that's a flexible area. Moving along, the building location. This is something too that, uh, addressed, oh, any questions?
Well, so, so I was the one who brought this up about the garages, uh, because the first floor of a garage is taller than the first floor of a home. Um, but I feel like because it cannot, it has to be the lesser. We're still sort of going to fall into the same thing because it is going to potentially naturally. It, let me say this another way, a A D U over a garage. Would very well be taller than a two-story home. And so we're still. And and I say this because I think that the highest potential for these ADUs. Is people who want to build a garage and put an ADU on top of it. And, you know, in the, in the vein of creating housing, which is what we're really trying to do here. I I just want to make sure that we're not still excluding by putting the lesser of, well, the the lawfully existing height. Just want to make sure that we're not still sort of killing this before it gets off the ground.
If I may, oh.
I just want to add one thing, though. To me, the the accessory dwelling unit, uh, and and I I hear what you're saying, but. It should still just be secondary. I think that's what, the more I think about it. it should still just be secondary. I think that's what, the more I think about it, I want it to be secondary to the primary. And, and that to me was a protective measure. Uh, so, and, and there are some other requirements which we could walk through, but, but maybe finish that out. So sorry, Director Ford.
I, I was going to agree with Counselor Conley. I think that the, um, I think the sense here was just that if the, the neighborhood, that whole neighborhood essentially is used to the, the size and size of the mass of the primary structures, then in essence, having the accessory structure somehow dominate, you know, those scenarios, then it changes the character protection of the neighborhood in a way. And so in essence, Counselor Conley said, I think, you know, having it always be essentially subordinate, remember the accessory unit is always essentially subordinate to the primary use. So here especially, we just didn't want the accessory unit to somehow flip, you know, what's creating that mass.
No, I, I fully appreciate that and understand. I just feel like where this is going to fall apart is, um, for some of our oldest homes that have very short ceiling heights. I have an historic home and I have very short ceiling heights in some of the areas. Um, but also some of the more modest homes. And, you know, I feel like people that live in some of the more modest homes in town could really benefit from a, from an ADU more than anybody else. So.
I'm just going to add, I think, you know, the definition of subordinate to the principal dwelling is for, you could contemplate that, um, ranch, a, 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 a single story home with a garage with a slightly higher uh, ADU above it is still subordinate to that single family. It may, you know, the height is not the thing that necessarily dictates that to me.
I don't want to try to purpose to be clear on that, but just to just like.
So we'll also remember if we start here, we can always break. And I think we, we know that if you go too far out of the box, it's hard to rein it in. So if we start this way and then Jennifer comes out and says, oh my gosh, we have this many folks coming out who want to do this, we can relook at it. But I mean, this is, this is a start and I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to kill anything. And I think we can learn in another year based off of all the information Jennifer's going to learn in the coming months, once this is passed and we start getting input from folks, whether we've, and we've had, taken a lot of public comment already. I think if there are folks out there that are starting to pay attention, we might learn pretty soon whether we messed it up or not. But I think give, give ourselves, you know, some time with what we're going to propose and then learn from it.
Yeah.
We can always, we can always expand. We can't bring it back in there.
So, yeah.
Okay.
I would like to offer, I didn't bring a graphic tonight, but I did go back and look at a lot of the two-car garage accessory structures that have gone up recent. I looked at the sections that the architects are putting in and those are coming in within the 15-foot height limitation, utilizing dormers and things like that. So there are ways to get a full contemporary garage and living space above on a, you know, a standard two-car garage footprint within even our 15-foot height limitation. So knowing that, I think going to 25 is a huge gift. Uh, because that actually allows two full tight walls and then a roof on top. If you have any questions on what that means and you want to come to the office or want me to email you some of those, I'm, I'm more than willing to share some examples of what can be done within our existing 15-foot limitation, if that makes you any more comfortable about going to maybe just 20 or the 25 that's currently within it. Um, I, I do think it's, um, here the concern and that's why I went back and, and did the research.
Yeah, I mean, again, I appreciate all of that, but you know, and, and a 900-foot square foot place that has significant dormers in it, leaves you very little space. I don't think this, I don't think there's going to be a lot of ADUs built, full stop, but, you know, I don't think there's going to be a million of them that come this way. It just, I just want to make sure that we're not sort of shutting down what I think is our best route to building some of these ADUs. But, you know, I'm not going to die on it, but I do appreciate, you don't want a giant, you know, ADU, a really tall ADU in a short house, right? Um, I just want to make sure that we're not cutting it off, but I'm not going to die on that. Um, and, oh, sorry.
Oh, I would just say that I think that it's a leap. If somebody needs this for their family, is a cost to, and who building a garage, like that's not the budget. And from an ROI standpoint, if somebody's doing this to have an income potential in a property, it's also a building a garage for the sake of this. I don't think the garage is going to be the starting point the majority of ADUs because I think that, again, if it's family need, it's going to be a tighter budget. And if it's for an income, why is somebody going to output a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand when they're trying to actually make money? So I don't think the garage part is going to be as big of a deal as the structure itself on the property.
I would, I would flip that and say, I've always wanted to build a garage, but it's really expensive. I can subsidize building a garage by putting an ADU.
Although you're spending a substantial more money upfront anyways, because you're creating plumbing the, the living structure, all of that.
For sure. But you can get a lot of rent in this town.
Yeah.
I, I feel like the 25 feet is very generous. Um, and, you know, for the same reasons that Jennifer mentioned, and I would be, I'd like the, the 25 feet as a cap because it is in our districts where we have 30-foot, I was, it's, it makes sense, um, subservient to it. Um, and I do like the provision that it should not be taller than the existing height of this dwelling. Not in this community, but in other communities, I've seen very large garages next to ranch houses and it just looks horrible. So I, I think this is a good.
So, to be clear, I have no problem with 25 feet. I also think that's generous. Uh, what I'm looking for is, is to get rid of the, the first part of it and just say it cannot be higher than 25 feet, which stops from giant garages.
Thinking about small, ranch houses with a 25-foot, two-story garage inside.
I think we're explaining that it stops the larger structure, but you're not necessarily addressing the fact that that's inconsistent with, say, the massing of structures in that neighborhood, but that, that streetscape.
I agree.
And I think, thinking about, I may be wrong about this, but thinking about those neighborhoods, the ranch houses, lots tend to be a little bit larger than in the south end, I think. And so that they've got more room to move the ADU around and keep the, the, the ADU beside the garage instead of the top of it. So I think that there's a little bit more flexibility there. Uh, so I actually, so at that point, I like this, this height regulation provision the way it is. Just a question for Jennifer. In terms of the 900 square foot, that would, that'd be 900 square feet of living space, correct? So that if there were areas under dormers that did not qualify for, for ceiling height, they would not be counted?
No, but living space counts area habitable space within a dormer. It even counts space within E's to a certain height in, within building. So if, if you took, for instance, a two-story structure that's the size of a two-car garage, not, not that it has a garage in it, but it's 22 by 24 feet and you put living space on two floors, that's essentially right there at 900 square foot threshold. So just to kind of put things back in perspective, if you make one 900 square foot, a single story, that's one thing, but these small accessory structures, I think, can fit in the height limitation we have. But we are providing flexibility in this draft.
And I do want to add one more thing. So this is for detached ADUs, which are allowed by rights. Our reason for doing this, and as we go back to the purpose, is that, you know, the residential neighborhood character, we are trying to put, because if the, if we left it to the state, people could do whatever they want, right? If we didn't do anything, in-law apartment is unenforced. So the reason of this whole section, everything you'll see here following, is really now preservation to some extent, while knowing what can be done. So I appreciate this conversation, but on this one, to me, the lesser, uh, is really how I want it. I think, and again, I'm looking at the neighbors, the abutters, you know, not what people individually might want to do. So that's one thing. I just think the lens that may be for now.
So Heather had her hand up first and then Heather, right? Did I misunderstand that 900 square feet, I thought this had to be a single level living space, not structure.
It's just the square footage of the unit. It's not about that it be, there's nothing, it says it has to be a story.
Counselor.
So, so I think we just need to remember that this is, um, replacing site plan. And so we're trying to put some guidelines and some bumpets around the, um, the, uh, no, no, no longer needing the expense and the, and the, uh, the complications of site plan review. And because we're moving it on the planning board to the ZBA, um, for, for, for good reason, uh, I think this is all thoughtful and, 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 and needs to be viewed in the lens of replacing site.
Okay, so we move, um.
Yes, thank you. Um, thinking about this, I just kind of have maybe, maybe a suggestion. I don't know. You tell me what you think, but, um, you know, given this sort of thought, um, and to be equitable, maybe, maybe we make it a little slightly broad and just say, you know, no, um, no higher than the principal dwelling, you know, so that it, it, it's going to replicate, at least the height's not going to ever be higher than the principal dwelling, right? Like 900 square feet and no higher than the principal dwelling.
Just to clarify, Counselor Donahue, the, the language right now does include not only the 25-foot limitation, but also or lesser lawful height.
Okay, so, well, but if, if, but if, if you have a single ranch, you know, si- single floor, um, single-story ranch, you don't want a two-story ADU next to it, right?
Right.
Right? That's what we're looking to avoid, right?
That's correct.
And you wouldn't be able to do that the way it's written now?
Correct, because it's required to be lower than or not higher than the existing dwelling, you know, the primary dwelling unit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then I guess I missed that. And I was just sort of confused about then what was even being argued.
Yeah, that's in conjunction with the, uh, maximum 25 foot. Uh, it's in conjunction with that. There are two stipulations in that provision.
So basically the way it's written, like, there's no chance of ADU being higher than a principal dwelling, are you saying?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So moving along, so building location, that was something that came up, um, I think from one of the planning board members, you know, what about front yards? And so we, uh, this was really, I appreciate the zoning administrator, Jennifer, came up with some of this language. Um, in terms of the detached ADU should be located behind the front building wall of said structure and at least 10 feet away from the principal dwelling, which is actually a building, um, building code requirement. So we have that in here as well. Driveway access, also something that, uh, was brought up too by the planning department is that it shall utilize existing curb cuts where feasible on the subject lot. And then screening, this was the one we talked a little bit about, the language was confusing or something about, um, you know, the adjacent lot and how close you are to it. But if, if located closer to lot line than the setbacks of the primary dwelling, then it must be screened, and this is, remember, all this were detached, from adjacent lots by a solid fence six feet in height or trees of dense vegetation established at a height of at least 6 feet. So that was to create the privacy element and to, and again, close the lot line.
I think we talked about this the last time, discussed this thing. Doesn't, doesn't this put you in a special permit for variance discussion anyway?
Not this, but the way.
Closer to the lot line than the principal.
You may have that reviewed by the board, but you're still required to have it screened.
I guess my point is, it, it seems like we're being very specific about what the solutions for screening are when this might be subject to review of the water site anyway. I mean, I, I, I understand that it's likely that it probably would be events or probably would be dense landscape. But it seems like you should give someone the latitude to review solutions in the context of the water special permit variance. So you could say screening is required to be approved by permanent grant. But I think just being this specific about it is, is a little.
But that's a suggestion, just some verbiage you're adding, you know, but to your point, I mean, you could possibly add something at the end, just saying, or is otherwise, you know, required by the permanent granting authority and it's something that, you want to allow the flexibility of another scenario makes sense.
Yeah.
Rather than.
That's true.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think of it in terms of the difference in elevation. You know, if one lot is well below the other, we have to, so give it, give it like an open.
I just think there's a broader expectation going on about Google in that circumstance and screening would be part of that.
Right. Okay. So maybe, sorry, I'm over. Um, so maybe language. So what I'm hearing is we could apply, keep screening, provide that as a department for detached. But then when we talk about how to give it a little bit more flexibility and maybe, um, and, and be creative in how we say it, and we could maybe say, for example, or, or such as, but we'll see. I'll see what's allowed.
Or as otherwise.
Or as otherwise, because I like this a little bit, but I like.
So this provides the floor, pretty has to comply with this period. The only question is, does the board at its discretion allow another scenario that makes sense in that context?
I think it makes sense to let the ZBA ask. In that, so you could just add that as a, on the tail end of that, of all that language.
Perfect. Right.
But, uh, in this provision, there was a, there was four words and I thought there were three words, there were four words and I wanted to get rid of. So the whether new or existing provision.
Yes. So let's go back to the ordinance and we'll go to that section and, and I, um, the plan, yeah.
Yeah. So that's number four section.
Yeah.
So this piece.
Yep. But because we've already said elsewhere that a new, um, detached ADU cannot violate the, the setbacks.
Yeah.
So adding whether, whether new or existing kind of makes that more ambiguous. So I think if you just took out those words, whether new or existing, is, is for any detached ADU that is closer to lot line than the setbacks.
I can, I can agree with that.
And I'm fine with that. That's.
Yeah, I think that's a good check.
Okay, next, going, moving along. I think we've just got a few left. We're almost there. Next is the windows. Um, yeah, so this one we talked a little bit about, you know, what, what this would look like. But we were also saying on the second story of a detached ADU about the windows. If they're facing, I guess this is the one actually, Counselor, that's what we're talking about, is that their, um, windows would be prohibited on walls facing adjacent yard or property line unless it's a third-story window with the bottom of the windows at least six feet above the second-story finished floor or the window faces a side yard property line that is adjacent to a non-residentially zoned property.
We, we talked about this one too, I think, the last. It's kind of consistent with what Counselor Roy was saying about lighting. I mean, this, this requirement doesn't apply to the principal structure. You can put whatever windows you want in the principal. But I'm not sure why we're reading this limitation on an ADU. It, it, it just, it doesn't make any sense.
And this originated in earlier questions about what would the things the board, the board that's reviewing, like, look at if they were looking at.
And, and I would suggest.
But in this case, you, you've met all of the. Leave that with the language.
What I was going, what I was going to say is to add in the, the language from four, in four of the screening to say detached ADU is located closer to the lot line than the setbacks of the, 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 because if you are, there's a difference between if you're 15 feet from the lot line or 60 from the lot. So I, I would say if you're converting a garage to a, an accessory dwelling unit, I think the neighbors do have an expectation of some kind of, so I think that's where, where you confuse it. So it's really the same, the same situation as for screening, is you want to make sure that you don't have. So I, I would just pull that provision down.
Right, yeah.
Not make it apply to something that conforms to setbacks. But, but, but if it's not, if it's not where a principal dwelling could be, then you give it some extra protection.
That would give yourself the same latitude that you did up above or as otherwise approved to deal with the existing condition that might actually have a window that everyone's.
Right. Yeah, like, okay, I'm good with that.
I think you always want to fall back on the individual review. In the case, is there a window that makes sense? Does this not make sense? If you're in adjacency, that really is a problem. I, I don't think you want to legislate it here. I think you want to allow that section from a, from a variant process.
But you do want to have some guidance to do.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, great, I like this suggestion.
Other than.
Think of properties in the south end, we have, you know, a yard is a square shape, let's say, right? We've been butter on this side and butter on this side. We also have butter in the back, okay? So if you have a structure, call it a garage, whatever, and the second floor, you're talking about three sides of window. They're now going to be six feet above the ground is the bottom of the window, right?
Yeah.
So on a seven-six wall height, you're going to be limited to about an eight-inch transom window on three sides of the structure. I have egress questions with an emergency of like better placement, living space placement in this. And somebody is now going to be sleeping in a, in a transom surrounded space, they can't get out. It's very limited light.
But, but if we revise this to say that this only applies if it's a non-conforming building, so if you conform to the, all the setbacks, you don't have this requirement there.
It's just the language that, that is located closer to the lot line than the.
Yeah, we're bringing that in. No, but thank you.
Can I just add? So I have the same concern about, you know, you sort of feel like you're living in caves as well, you know, a lot of like. But what we sort of ended on is, that's what, um.
Really, I'm getting into.
But yeah, getting out, I mean, if you don't have guidelines, we're going to get up too.
But if, if you conform to zoning, there's no restriction.
Right.
Wait, look, look.
I think Skylar's. So they don't want.
We're having multiple comments.
Yeah.
All right, I'll sit over here. All right, over here. Was it direct report?
No, I'm, you know, my only, my only point was that in limiting the type of window, you're also limiting the, the use of its. And it, a better, if, if you have a structure that, that has. What, what you're saying, if you keep this line to the way it is, you're not allowed that. Better method. A transom window. So we're creating limitations on the planning.
I'm not concerned about that because I think if we're dealing with tight neighborhood and a building that is closer to the lot line and is allowing zoning, I think we need to have a lot of protections. It's just, that's my feeling of this. I, I'm happy allowing things even by right if they conform to zoning. Just, you know, I'm just concerned about, you know, to use a non-technical, return to jam something into your place and then not, no special rules. And I think I'm, I'm very happy with allowing these as a, or in other. But we are allowing this.
Certainly.
So I think it's fine if, if it conforms to some.
And then last one was elevated outdoor spaces, upper level balconies and decks are prohibited on detached ADU. How do folks feel about that? You don't want to put it closer to the lot line again here? Okay, I won't ask anyway.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
I would say, you, you know, in some instances, you know, if I have a very large lot in my house and I want to put an ADU there or s- you know, nobody behind the house. That's seem limiting to not allow for a debt beyond the, the ADU. I mean, in, in tight neighborhoods, first, makes no sense, right?
So the question is, is there a caveat put to that where it applies to a certain?
Yeah, what if you said that it's similar to the windows? Structure is conforming, so in theory, if a house could be built in that location, you know, different, you're not going to limit it on a home being built, so.
The language.
Sure, right, yeah. All right.
So perhaps four, five and six could be group safe for, for detached ADUs that are located closer to the lot line than setbacks of the, prior.
Yeah.
Screening, windows, elevated.
I can, yeah, that's good, you know, that's a good idea.
That way they're all, they're, they're consistent.
Yeah, I like it.
All subject to review.
Great, thank you. And that actually covered a deliberation by the public, now, I, I mean, that's all we wanted to show, that, that was.
Was there any other discussion or questions? We should open it.
Yes, so, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this? And if you would, please come forward to the imaginary right line there. You know where it is, you, you can see.
You've done me.
Definitely Nick of it, ninety-three High Street. I actually have a question, um, not a comment, and it would be easier, I think, if we could go back to the slide for section, uh, twenty-two B. Yes, thank you. So, um, under two B, um, we talked about, uh, dimensional controls and, um, non-conformities as things that would create some. And I'm wondering if it needs to be, and I, I guess the question is, if, if this is in the DOD or the DECOD, would all of those rules still apply? So if you are expanding a historic house in the DECOD, or if you were changing a historic, you know, contributory accessory building, will you still need to go through uh, historic permission review and, uh, any special permitting that might come up because of the extent to which you're making changes?
Yeah, I, I think great question, I defer to Jennifer, but basically the, the sum result is, yeah, that would still apply, that does not change at all. Uh, that, it's just like the massing and strength essentially here still applies, so that trigger would still be as per the twenty-five percent extra wall, et cetera. I don't know if you're.
Do you think it should be mentioned in the code simply because, um, I don't think that, that is, that's not dimensional control and it's not non-conformity, it is something very specific.
I understood. I, I, I don't see the need to put it in this particular ordinance myself mainly because at, at the end of the day, what's happening here, the ordinance is very long, there's lots of sections in it, of course.
Right.
Um, and we'd be copying and pasting many places to make references elsewhere all the time, so I guess at the end of the day, I think it's effectively covered by its presence elsewhere in the ordinance, it's pretty clear. And the zoning administrator has to review and approve any of the permits that are going on, so both of those things would come into play. Both of those reviews compliant with the ADU ordinance and compliant with the DECOD would both be something that should be verified. Unless I'm.
I can't wait for the hearing when Lisa Need comes up and says, and says it's not in the ordinance, so it doesn't apply.
Understood, I've all had that disagree.
Well, I mean, I, I'll take a look at it. I mean, I could do a Ctrl F and look in the ordinance just to see to like how, how do we map? Because, you know, that was the other thing.
Easily referenced.
Yeah.
I would think maybe.
I, I think even a reference is not.
It, it's fully, uh, enforceable as it is, however, there's not a harm in putting it.
Yeah.
And, um, I certainly look at those things all the time, but for instance, if someone else looking at it, there's, you know, it sure is not a harm in adding that.
Yeah, I, I think, I, yeah.
Okay, so for both DECOD and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could be, for example, a very simple addition, unless I'm missing something, would be in the introductory sentence for number two, which says to verify compliance with the provisions of this ordinance, including all of the related districts, that kind of thing.
Yeah, both sides some way, but that's a good point, thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the, yes? You might, you might do.
Right here. Come down further. Before Low Street, I've watched this, um, I think all of these meetings and thank you for all your work, for all your thoughtfulness. This feels very doable. As a resident, I feel like I can read it and say, I know what I can do, I have ten feet on either side, I'm in this zone, and I, I can, I can do this because I have the space and the time, and this is something that is incredibly helpful to my family. I just want to give the context again. I think when we get in weeds, we can sometimes lose the people, so I'm going to be the people right now. Um, we have two, uh, very young adult children who, God love them, cannot afford to move out of the house, right? This gives us options. It allows us to leverage our biggest asset in a way that we can continue to support our family. Our young adults can experience independence and live in this, or we can live in it and give them the big house and we'll clean up less and they'll take care of that, or we can rent the big house. We are around the corner from Anna Jakes. I know there are people who work there who would love the opportunity to live right where they work. There's so much flexibility in this and that is a huge public good. I really appreciate the work and I want to see this get through. Thank you so much for your time and effort.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
There is one.
Okay, go ahead.
Owen Smith, did you want to address, ready? Uh, Owen, you'll have to on you if you want to address the board. We.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, thank you.
Yep, uh, Owen Smith, uh, one seventy-five story avenue, and I apologize if I break out into a coughing fit. Uh, or my energy breaks down, I'm in New Jersey, breathing wildfire smoke. Um, you know, me personally, when I moved to Massachusetts, we started out living in a, what would be defined as a accessory dwelling, and it was an in-law apartment in a, uh, what I would consider a single-family home, which had an extension in the back in Charlestown, Massachusetts. It was really the only affordable rental place that, uh, Lisa and I could afford at the time. Um, you know, learning more about what it costs to live, uh, I really appreciated that opportunity. Um, you know, later on, we moved out here mainly because our family grew and, uh, an in-law moved in with us permanently. So, you know, there are many young families that, um, can afford to live out here if they have the means to have enough space to live comfortably. And, you know, as somebody that lives in Ward Five and lives in a single-family home, if I had the means and ability to ex- expand it uh, within the dimensional requirements of my lot, you know, that's what I think most homeowners feel like they should be able to do because of property rights. You know, if people are upset about why we're having to adopt this ordinance, you know, th- this is not the place to grieve about it. You know, you need to take the train into Boston, take the green line over to Park, uh, Park Street and walk up to Beacon Hill. You know, there's a big picture here. Uh, you know, uh, Boston's basically, uh, the urban core here and that, uh, they need to expand in order to, for our economy to grow. Um, you know, we need to kind of look at the big picture for, as a region on how we grow. If we don't allow, um, our community to develop, you know, our costs are going to keep going up because we're not going to be able to grow our tax base, so, um, as somebody that works in the public policy space, you know, I understand that there is a bigger picture here. Local governments are just a small part of it, but, you know, the state's really the one that grants us the ability to uh, even have local zoning and they recognize that some things need to meet the regional needs, so. Um, thanks for listening to my comments and, uh, appreciate the time, thanks.
Thank you. Right, but is there anybody else on public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and bring you back to the counselors and the board. Yes.
Something he just said about, um, taxes. So if it's second structure, is it going to get taxed at the same rate because it's now a full improvement of the property? Or would there be some sort of like a tax deduction?
Especially if it's not being wrapped and rented. I have the benefit of sitting in the same office as the assessor right now, getting the dark remote look, working arrangements, and so I have had this conversation as well. What they currently call an in-law apartment or a small subordinate apartment that's taxed at a lesser rate will now be called an accessory dwelling unit. It is not taxed at the same rate as a primary dwelling unit. The subordinate ones have a, have a different rating. It will not be taxed down within two families. It will be a primary and Canadian.
So it will be, the property will then have one value?
It'll all sum up to one total.
It's one total, but it's not, it doesn't equal a two unit. You're not being taxed in a full unit.
But you know how sometimes on your property, you have X amount of feet of like conservation land and they separate and they, I'm just.
They'll probably have a line item, there'll be a line item, I think, in there that will reflect it similar to those as the ADU.
Yeah.
But to Jennifer's point, it just won't be the same word of baggage as a full second unit on the property. So there will be a line, I think you'll see a line on the card.
But your whole property is going to be assessed. So if you have, for seven hundred and fifty thousand as it sits today, and then you build this ADU, they're going to say, oh, this is actually worth this, now your property is worth, say, nine eighty.
Right, I think they'll attribute that amount to, I think they'll show as a role, they'll attribute that amount to that proportional amount that they're adding to the ADU itself, not just lump it together with the total. I think they'll show that in some way on the card to show that that's attributable to that.
But all at like nine dollars and ninety-seven.
No, it's a different rate, it's a different.
Different rate.
A different rate.
It, it's, it's not at, it's at the same rate as the single family.
It is.
But it's, it does not make it a two unit. I thought that was your question.
No, my question was, does it get isolated like the conservation land does and, and, and be a, no.
It's, it's part of the single family.
Okay.
Your example is wrong. That you laid out seven fifty plus, and now it's nine eighty times. By the way, our systems work, it's going to be broken.
Hmm.
So you'll all of a sudden see a, a jump, you'll need to be there.
Right, that's right.
So, so I think it'll all, it, there'll have to be a reevaluation of com- comparable sales for units with accessory dwelling units as part of a parcel. And, um, so I would, I would suggest to the assessor that they, once we pass this, um, that they codify accessory dwelling units, parcels as a separate entity and look to the comparable sales for those units when they, when they try.
Hmm. Which will take a while because these are being built for longevity and not for the soon.
Yeah, that's true, but, 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 yeah, at some point, they, they, they aren't going to be, I, I assume there'll be, otherwise no one would do it. I think that, I would assume there'd be an increase in value by, by doing this, though, no one would do it, so. So if there is, then, then it will, whatever that incremental additional value that you're creating will be taxed.
People are doing this for the value of their property. Doing this for either residual income or to help a family member.
Or, or, or rent, that's the event.
That doesn't mean they want that their property going to be hired at that point, because they don't want.
Well, that is control.
Yeah, no.
Control with the assessors.
I think I could take that on. Um, there are other communities that have had since twenty eighteen this type of, um, that ADUs allow, so they have some data, like at least, uh, well, we can look and talk to the community, like their assessors and see, but.
Because that might be an unforeseen sort of variable to some people who are like, oh, I'm building this, I want income and, oh my God, my tax just went up. It just, you know, it's just something that
Yeah.
may occur to them in the moments of planning and, you know.
It's an improvement on your property.
Wouldn't you expect with an improvement on your property that your property value was.
Councilman McCall.
After this, right, is that if you do, uh, uh, within the structure, to be honest, right? So if you take that two family and slice off something inside, then you'll just have two units in, in one fine building, but if you build out on it, or you have an attached unit, you're going to have an improvement, a net improvement on your property. Uh, and you will see, uh, an increase in your valuations and.
Yeah, no, we'll be same.
Any further discussions before we move to our. No. So, couple ways to hear, the way I would like to. I would like to be able to close the public hearing and make a presentation.
I think we're, I think we're in the same, in the same boat.
Yeah.
So, um, would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this, um, ordinance?
Full of danger.
Full of danger.
Yeah.
I'll move to the close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Okay, and. Okay, and Charlie's still here, right?
I'm I'm still here.
Does she want to go out? So on that, on that motion. Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Brian?
Yes.
And I will, yes. So the hearing is closed. Do you want to close your hearing right now?
Motion to close the public hearing for the planning developments of committee.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we.
So. I don't know whether anybody has a, or the planning board has a suggestion, but here is what I would suggest that we do. I don't think we need to, from my point of view, see another draft of this ordinance. What I would suggest that we do is to send a report to the city council. Recommending approval of the ordinance. With the following recommendations, where it is suggested as recommendations. So that is is not so specific and I I have seven and you may have more.
Yeah, let's see if we have the same list. Yeah.
Okay, so one is. On section twenty-two B. Two C. Simply to change the wording to say to say a proposed. Attached ADU on the same lot as a one family use. And then delete the words whether attached or detached. That was the first one. The second one was. In on the same page, section twenty-two B two, at the end of two. To add some wording. Including any requirements of overly distant or something like that. One sort of generic one, kind of bouncing around a little bit. Well, one is to move the lighting standard to detached units, detached ADUs. That was in right over that section that was.
C and moves to D.
Yeah, okay. For the items four, five and six, well, maybe not four, five and six, are they in that section?
Oh, the ones that were to be grouped.
Ones to be grouped. Yes.
These here.
It's four, five and six, screening windows and elevated outdoor spaces to have those grouped together as. Detached ADU structures that are located closer to the lot line and the setbacks. Whereas required under the sources. So we're only requiring those additional standards if they're non-conforming standards.
And then with the language about the special permit granting authority.
And the additional flexibility, yes, for both of us. So that takes care of those and the last one that I have, and I'm not sure whether it's. Required or not, but it's that question about clarifying the special permit. For converting an accessory structure that is conforming to the ADU that it becomes non-conforming.
Right.
To make sure that's a special permit rather than a very.
Yeah, Jennifer's going to say something.
I I'm agreeing with Rick that we need to, I believe that fell out in some of the restructuring and we need to be explicit within. If that's the comment from the board, I fully support that.
Did you have anything else?
We noted that you got the OD and D five.
Well, that was that was the, that was the addition to the end of. To be a twenty-two B paragraph two, adding.
Was there anything else on?
Under, can I say a question underneath D, sorry?
Twenty-two D?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just. But I think I'm saying right in between here, two family. Principal or accessory, was that?
Who is this?
Sorry, this is underneath two, sorry, B two. Whether or not everybody had in here. After two family principal or accessory.
No, we were going to take. Would add accessory between proposed and ADU at the very beginning of that, then delete all that either within or attached to it. So it would say a proposed attached ADU detached. I would propose detached ADU on the same lot as a two family use that complies with all applicable conditions. We're just making it a simpler statement. Did anybody else have anything that they wanted to raise or suggest this changes? No. So. If the board members feel comfortable with it. Accept a a motion to say whatever the chair said. To that, we'll put it in the, we'll put it in the.
I would move that we make a recommendation to. Move the ordinance. With those additional conditions.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Second. So Alden?
Yes.
Bob? Charlie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
And I go, yes. So it is done.
Motion to adjourn.
We want to keep this in committee for the next, so we can actually see it in another two weeks.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, well, is there a timing process in any way?
We've got February.
No. Yeah, we have until February, so we can, this can come out in December and then we vote in December and January and we have that on. All right.
I'd like to see all the final.
Aye, very. Thank you. That serves one last reminder in planning department anyway. All right.
Hence my motion to adjourn.
Oh, I heard a second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
So the next item is we're into general business. And I think we only have. And unfortunately, I apologize if I have another chance to do. I would like to post. I would like to look at. So now we are in the next item is we're off to discussion, review and improve the housing production plan and I understand that.
It posted on to our next meeting as well. We were waiting for the edits and a couple of clarifications from NVPC where we gave some comments. They just haven't had a chance to turn that around. It's real bad to us. So. We figure it's a lot easier for us if they just have that revised document and patient about the data points.
So we are down to a couple of zoning items. On Story Avenue, those three zoning and update to signage regulations and take it away.
Just briefly, I'll branch up briefly on signage regulations. Quick summary, as I mentioned before, we're updating signage regulations and you know, our focus with MBTA wrapping up, ADUs wrapping up, we can focus on some others. Or something that we want to do, one of which is to update the signage section. There's actually a general ordinance that applies more generically. You know, and we're talking about city home properties really there for the most part. And then we have the zoning ordinance, we think about our typical whole application that I mean, a lot of these commercial industrial properties. So if you have thoughts and things that you like or don't like that you see out there, even if you're not looking at the text of the ordinance that they're today. Or you haven't read a bunch of other ordinances that are by comparison. Thank you, Rick, for giving thoughts on other like. Examples and provisions. If you have, even aside from text that you're thinking of, you know, provisions of. Just suggestions of things that you like or don't like that you're seeing around the city, or that you'd like to allow more or allow less of in a given area or context. Whether it be size or nature of signs, internal illumination, external illumination, and all that kind of stuff. Anything that you're seeing, having your insight now would be helpful because we would like to put together the package between November, December. So that we can go into the council in first, you know, meeting in January and say, here's a package for review. We're obviously getting to our usual full process. But we'd like to have something that's at least reasonably ready to go at that point, taking into account some informal feedback. Obviously, we'll have a formal feedback review during that process. Whereas we might have various illustrations and things like that during that process, but. You know, to the extent we can get something that's a full package for the council and to get in that process, that would be great versus, you know, having a six month. Tourette's type, you know, type thing and then getting to the formal process of the council. So if you have any thoughts, you know, coming days early, get it to us. To allow us to incorporate those to the best of our ability or address them in the best of our ability.
So when you said November and December, you really mean December?
Uh, in December. I'm sorry, I mean, I meant us. We'll be working on it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Temporary and fixed permanent signs?
Uh, yeah, so again, there's obviously a lot more flexibility for some of the nature, for some of the temporary signs, right? In terms of, you know, details where the type would be there. But yeah, it's addressing both temporary and permanent. Yeah. And and even, you know, things now to like, you know, that couldn't allow it for construction site or construction projects, that kind of thing. Well, you know, consideration of things like weight binding, you know, business park weight binding or other places. Or downtown, you know, weight binding, something the city, think about the things that the city might want to be able to do. We're making a distinction obviously between right of way and parcels, actually, I can't make a land. That there has been a little bit more recent discussion about signage on city property, whether it be parks or any other locations. In addition to the typical signage, we often think about like commercial properties and whatnot. So. If you have any thoughts across that spectrum, what you'd like, don't like, want to allow more or deny. Let us know because that'll help us in crafting and revising, you know.
And generally, the the signage requirements on city property, they're written, they say off outside of. Would not be as owning, as owning where it would be a city, the general.
General, that's correct, right? To the right of.
So one thing I've noticed, for example, is when you come through three roads. You come out of High Street, there are a whole bunch of signs near or. Rotary or Tree City or Church or Lyons, I'm not sure what they are, but they're all on, it seemed to me all non-conforming. I don't know whether you're actually collecting all the fee, annual fees that you're supposed to be collecting and requiring a million dollars worth of insurance that you're supposed to be. And you're putting the ordinance. So I think that that's an area, I think the major area of sign clutter that we could clean up. By looking at all these signs that are posted on on either freestanding, the signs that are leaning off to the side. Utility pools. I think that's a huge area, but that's not.
Yeah.
Really not primary areas.
But I do think it's very much worthwhile having a feedback exam at that point. And I actually, although I actually think it's a much more important area geographically. And to be concerned about clutter and aesthetic. An example also is if you go to the end of Master Way, under the city council's process where A-frame signs can be. There's a clutter of A-frame signs that have been approved there and that's not, that's not under zoning with the private properties and properties, but. It's under the general ordinances and in the process where they have been approved, but I would like to see us discourage. The clutter aspect, I would be perfectly fine, or at least just start with some sort of wave binding that it's consolidated. But I think it's problematic even in that context to allow just a clutter of, you know, things that are happening. And we have a similar dialogue, even though it's not zoning, so if you have thoughts on it, like we said, in the downtown about A-frames, for instance, you know. Sometimes they're moving around in places that are problematic. Do we have other ways of doing something like that? Or do we want to have more or less of them? Or do some businesses need them because they have, you know, visibility, you know, or don't? Is that fair or is it not fair? So all those kinds of considerations.
Yeah, I think that we should, I think that we have, I can't remember when the, I know when I was in the development, we went through a revision of that whole A-frame thing. And the, I think we were maybe overly strict in some ways. We were overly strict in requiring. proximity to the business entrance, I think, but we were kind of lax. Maybe we're not lax in enforcement of making sure that there's, you know, eight feet of space.
Right.
In downtown, five feet of space.
It seems to be more the enforcement. Yeah, it seems to be at the time of initial approval, there's agreement on where and where to place at least. But then it's not necessarily always kept there.
So I think that you could, you could, so what some communities do is they define a. A zone in the sidewalk area where all signs, all signs, trash pews. Planters, it has to be so that you ensure that the travel path. Is there, we should have.
That'd be a little bit unique for us. Say.
Right, but I mean, State Street.
State Street.
It gets crazy down there. So I think that's, it goes beyond signs. It goes to the. Outdoor dining and so forth as well. It gets a little bit.
Would this consider, sorry, do I raise my hand?
Yes, please.
Would this, okay, would this take into consideration some like traffic flow, I think that you're you're just talking about? An example would be coming up from Merrimack up to High, say from Jefferson Street. And Olive is to your right and the senior center to the left, coming out onto High Street is a near impossibility. And it becomes like this game of, you know, cat and mouse trying to get out. Is there anything we could do about that? Or I don't know if there's been.
Public control signage is not really covered by these regulations.
But I think what I think what you might be talking, that particular location is also a location that James Snow has talked about quite a bit. And it's because, part of it is because of parched parks. And and that has just been addressed in traffic or actually. And public works and safety committee by moving some no parking, extending some no parking areas away from the intersection. The other problem with that is there are some really stupid trees there, which are, they're not street trees. They're like. Like the little rose bushes and Alice in Wonderland. You can't see through them. And so, but you know, I think we need to have. We don't, we don't actually, it's another thing we don't enforce in the city is clears of the branch of trees. And I think that's, so that's, Charlie, you're absolutely right about that intersection. It's a terrible intersection to get out. And and it's a combination of cars, vegetation, and that's part of the two.
Yeah, definitely sightlines is definitely an issue. It's a slightly different issue than, you know, for some of this are progressing here. But I think it definitely should be addressed across the board in whatever context we can, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I love all the things you're saying.
Yeah.
Because they're all the things that it falls about, but they are not zoning and they are not planning.
It's a pretty planned word.
What I would question actually is if the planning board could make a statement to city council and the administration. That points these things out and says, well, we as planning board work so hard at enforcing these on the parcels. We need to take it the next step and have some city body, whatever it is. Make the same enforcement in the right of, because, you know, the proliferation of signs, it, I get the calls on it. And I remove them when I have, just goodness of being, but. The the department who should enforce that perhaps is is not understanding the ultimate, you know, the the land use goal.
Yeah, I agree one hundred percent because we have a general ordinance and we have a zoning. I think as we get in that discussion, especially if we get a formal process. But we'll be able to talk with the city council and, you know, point out the fact that even if we're addressing the clutter on the private properties or properties, I should say in general. Shouldn't we also be addressing the clutter in the right of way, you know, or sightlines in, you know, or clutter, just aesthetic clutter?
So in terms of the zoning, well, Charlie, go ahead.
I was going to say, I mean, it's one thing that we're charged with proactive planning. I I don't think there's anything wrong with doing some retroactive planning as well. Meaning they didn't think through that.
What do you mean by retroactive planning?
They didn't think through that. The signage and the traffic flow and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, it it needs some, there's a lot of different evolutions that I think gotten with the way they were historically, but yeah, to your point, I guess it's. It hasn't been looked at comprehensively. I guess there's the recent approval, maybe a month ago, so I know the new pasture, maybe two months ago at this point. But that was one where relatively recently, we saw the council, the usual, you know, format, approving the A-frames for these individual businesses. But the result ends up being a bunch of individual randomly sort of habitually placed signs and that may be, you know, you may say, oh, a new pasture way, that's, you know, a day. But anywhere in the city, I think we should look anywhere in the city and think about clutter regardless of the occasion. Granted, the context is definitely the High Street, more important than the end of New pasture, but I don't think that's any, that we should not be applying the same logic to the.
And you could, you could easily, this is something, and I don't remember exactly how it was resolved, but. Thinking about putting a private wave finding sign on public. And I think that that new pasture way, instead of putting a bunch of A-frames in an aisle. You could put it on the north, friendly corner, northly corner of that intersection. And 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 basically have the city enter into an agreement with the businesses to to put in a.
Singular.
Singular permanent sign that has, as if it were a shopping.
Yes.
And to have, and to have your direction, because all you've got behind you, I think.
I agree. I think that's much more logical. Like it it might be worth imagining. I'm sorry, did you want?
I'm just agreeing and that that ability exists. We did see it at one other location within the business park where. The local businesses came together and proposed that. In this case. It's the local businesses for some reason didn't unify.
But but the city could force it by saying no more.
They could have said no, but we will. Or they could again after the. Move it forward, or they could again, after these permits are up, they do have an expiration. They could win the recommendation from.
Yeah.
Their hardworking planning board.
I, I have a similar question. Yeah. But not to think of everything, even like the tannery where you have, like, there's a million different signs on the post. That's obviously not what we're talking about, but. A similar question came up and then in some instances, is there some way to consolidate, you know, four A-frames or all the same for practice? Asian, right? You know, there are ways of doing that too. You can have a single post with something on it, you know, for that one, fifty of them on it. You can have just a few that need the identification. So there are ways of reducing the clutter, I think, and we should. Look at all areas, you know, um, it isn't, like you said, zoning, but we definitely should not think the same logic.
So, so in the case of zoning, you gave you.
Yeah.
So I, I, I went through two fairly comprehensive revisions of the Portsmouth zoning section. One in twenty, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And, uh, the, uh, the Portsmouth has a. Sign section that is over the top. When we did, we did it two years, zoning reclassification, I think that we probably had, we had like sixty meetings. But I think that we had probably twelve meetings on signs in that, in that time period. And it's, it is a very contentious topic. Because your, you know, businesses want signs. But I think there were some good ideas and maybe, if you, if you're ruling, maybe you could just, I'm not recommending that the city adopt it. It's just to think about some of those.
I, I, I'm in full agreement trying to incorporate some of these things. And I definitely want, I think what we have to recognize is we don't control the general ordinances, the public way, quite in the same ways we can focus on, you know, any parcel. I definitely think we should do that, uh, before we can.
And one of the things we have to, um, to consider is a Supreme Court case that took place in. Two thousand twelve, yeah, the re, which basically requires content neutrality in science. So you can't say. Um, that you can have a political sign on your lawn. You can say, you can have a temporary sign on your lawn during a campaign. But that sign can say anything. It doesn't have to refer to a candidate.
Yeah.
So you have to rewrite that whole ordinance.
I, Jennifer and I have had a fair amount of conversation on this. I do, I do think in, in essence, though, at the end of the day, there will be some correcting case law if you will, that. By my service, because I don't, I think that's almost, if you take every builder case, I mean, to the extreme, it's like, well, you can't read any content. You have to figure, you have to figure out what the sign content is in Subway. And I think we were talking about it, it's, it's, clearly if you're tying it to a land use on the property or a business, that's a logical land use zoning connection that we assume wouldn't be. So I, I, in my view, I just wanted to flag that back. And well, I definitely think we have to adapt language for that case. I also think, um, there is a reasonable amount of latitude that communities have to have to read the content of what's going on in the sign in order to determine how to deal with the sign. And that's where I feel like if you, you'd almost have to, you'd have to read to an extremely real, you know, read up the case in order to get to that conclusion. And I think it's an unreasonable way. To expect communities to regulate signage to say, well, you can't look at any of the content. So I definitely agree the case is important, but I also don't want to. Um, era so far where there's no content maybe whatsoever anyway.
I mean, you know, this, the example would be if, you know, somebody, you know, you're in the presidential election, you know, you want to have, you know, Harris or Trump. But somebody doesn't want to say either, can't they make a political statement? And that's the problem.
Yes.
So that's why you can't regulate.
I agree.
Anyway, I think we need to look at.
Yeah, one of the things probably worth imagining now, sorry, do you want to mention before I go to?
I mean, we, we do have a draft in the works. I have received your Portsmouth example as well, which I read through and yes, it's a bit over the top. We also, Portsmouth is a little bit, it's a larger city. It has more zones, more and, and more business zones.
Yeah.
Um, but there are a lot of points in there that can be learned from. Many we've already sort of incorporated. Uh, we will be meeting with the administration to sort of talk about those city properties and making sure that the, the sort of governing party, the, the. Who, who the right person or entity is, so they're working on.
So you're already, you're already impressed with me? So will you be reading a draft to us at our next meeting?
Uh, I mean, that would be too soon, I think.
How, well, I guess I'm not sure how, what we're supposed to do in the absence of talking about specifics.
I know, well, we'll probably. Could be able to go through those specifics and then circle back with the larger group here.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering why some of the guys on the agenda, just trying to figure out.
It won't be for the next meeting because we will still be crafting through and working with some of the counselors to get some of their insight on what we.
So January, we're talking?
We'll be working through in December, so.
I guess, I, I think, and I asked the same question of, uh, Andy is what, what this conversation was. I think it was gathering ideas. As far as where you all might think the concerns are or the things we need to address. Maybe you don't have a solution, but as Charlie said. How do we address this? And, and maybe it's not in the zoning ordinance. Maybe we say, we hear you, that's a concern and that needs to be addressed in the general ordinance. So that's, that's really what.
So maybe what you do then is you give us, you, you give us the homework to look at, right? We, we need to look at some, we can't just talk in the absence of.
No, no, you'll definitely, yeah. And it might be that it takes longer to get the, when the county becomes February, because we're getting some, you know, but either way, we're trying to get to a fully crafted. Uh, and then, you know, we can summarize for you and say, here's what the existing ones say, here's what the proposed one says, right? Here's, we go through each section. Here's what this section is doing today. Here's what we would change to do. There was a new element that's been brought into question and we're gonna incorporate in there that I was gonna mention. And that's something we'd stop on to say, you know, here's something that's, we're thinking about.
If I could ask for, if I could give you an assignment, it would be tell me what you think the best example of signage is around town? And what you think is the most problematic example of signage around town? And I think that would get to, to me.
Mm-hmm.
That would get a.
Port Plaza.
So please send me your photo.
And it, it, because we could talk in words all we want, but I bet you could all go around the city and.
Yeah.
It depends, it depends on the kind of zoning district you're in too. I mean, downtown, the best downtown, the worst downtown, the best, uh, Story Avenue, worst.
Yeah.
But that's.
I tell you, one thing I noticed today, and it might've been there for a long time, right in the, uh, the custom house museum, there's a wooden post. Right on the curb with a sign.
It's oddly enough, been there for years and the reason.
Did they paint it or something? I don't know.
Which sign is this? Is this the?
Yeah, it's right in, it's right in front of it, but it's right on the curb.
And it's like a swinging.
Yeah, so a wooden sign hung over with a post that looks, you know, and again, I was drafting this.
Yeah. We went back and I, I looked at photos from ten years ago and it, it has been there. Um, for some reason, it all of a sudden is standing out to people. You're not the only one.
As Jennifer knows, my grape is actually the CBS sign for the mail, because that was years ago, that was the permit process, maybe they should have, a sign that would have been essentially prior to Jennifer's time, I think. Would have been sent to the ZVA to review because it was, it basically looks more like a larger billboard now than it did years ago.
Yeah.
And I think that at the time, we, you know, should have been run into the ZVA review and, you know, whatever face change was being made there because it's a different sign, really. Um, because it looks more like an illuminated billboard next to the wall. That to me is inappropriate. Um, but that's something that will be, you know, it's all, it's sometimes the answer to some of the questions is. Oh, well, there's a reason why this went this way, this way. It isn't necessarily because we weren't inside this or that, because it was part of it, or, you know, something was historical or, you know. There might be some other context to that situation. But I did want to mention the parks one, um, just briefly, we're, we're, we've been talking with, um, Tim Turner, who's the, sort of project manager, he used to be the Parks Commission Chair. The Parks Commission, because there's, uh, interest in the continued fundraising for parks spaces, there's interest in having sort of donation signs. And although we, uh, I think it's important to have.
That's like, like, like the tree sign on the river. Because the font has a tree sign where people get leaves.
The leaves, yeah. In, in essence, if you look at, if you think about like a basic, a lot of the consistent signs, we, we start to have here, two granite posts, right, basic four by four, six by six granite posts, you know, panel between. I think the idea conceptually seems to be, you know, reasonably, I would say, characterize part of my progress on a few. Is consistency generally across the board, but it's kind of those things identifying a city park property, right? Hopefully they're all kind of reasonably consistent or maybe context, you know, is important, but. Um, but where the donation signs are being potentially added in as an additional type of sign, right? We're talking about additional type potential clutter, depending on where you, how you look at it. Um, having it be, uh, something that's potentially loud, but allowed in a uniform way, um, in a size, you know, constraint or consistency, you know, some stipulations on it. So that you could have something, but it isn't necessarily the giant thing facing the street. It's something that's maybe set back a little bit, uh, provides a notice of, you know, someone's helped upon something. But it's for those that are interior decides or others are seeing it, as opposed to being, you know, it's right by the street and it might be another street seems cluttered thing. That's probably unnecessary.
Don't you just exempt anything that's not readily visible from the street? And it's not, that's, that seems like.
Well, it could be, but I also think, or at least in my view, that is still public realm.
But if it's, if it's a city agency doing it, presumably.
So right, I agree, but right now, that's part of the issue is we don't have one hundred percent consistency or clarity as to who is doing which signs in which areas. So for instance, Fuller Field, it's something that wasn't a hundred percent. Is it parks or is it tools? And there's overlap there. So here, we're gonna try to be more clear going forward, reach these areas, who's got, you know, jurisdiction? So there isn't this ambiguity or things that, you know, like.
Yeah, because we've got a bunch of signs all, all around the city, you know, the, the interpretive panels or something, the memorial panel for COVID. I mean, they're all, you, you have to be.
There need to be exceptions as well.
So I, what I think that they, yeah, I think that maybe you want to define signs narrowly. So the things that are, um, memorial, you know, things that are approved by city council or approved by the Parks Commission. As memorials or as interpretive signs or something like that, don't, don't get.
I think we, I agree on that. I think we want to basically codify something like that because right now, at least the story, we've had some that have popped up, but there isn't really a provision of dealing directly with that. It's not clear. Who has the authority to approve that or that there's an exemption or that, you know. So I think here we're actually making that more clear in the general, when we're talking about city, general.
So here's a, here's an interesting perspective. I'm working somewhat with the Parks Commission on redoing five kiosk, in, entry kiosk signs for the rail trail. And so would that be, are you thinking about that being a?
Is it just the identifying, sorry?
Just removing the panels and putting new panels.
Yeah, I mean, we want to allow the place name identification type things, those things as being a pretty expected type of sign is, sorry, did you?
If, if you're simply removing a panel and replacing it with the same type of content, it, it.
In this case, we're removing two panels and replacing with more margin.
If.
Made a, made a.
Within the same dimension.
The same dimension. In this case, where it's on a municipal property.
Yeah.
That would not have no review. It's the same size in.
Okay.
I hesitate only because if that were a commercial property and you were replacing two smaller signs with one larger. That gets to the billboard conversation that Andy was speaking to. But on a municipal property. And it, it's a regulatory or informational type sign.
I think, I mean, it seems to me with, with municipal signs, however defined, it's, it's more a matter, it's, it should be more a matter of policy than it was. You know what I mean?
Yeah, and I think that's the reason why. We just want to have a designation of who the entity or authority is to, to allow those signs. And that way it's at least clear for constituents to understand, you know, how the sign got there, how they get it approved, rather than having it be, and I think, read, because it's a different, it should be more latitude, I think. There's more public purposes for having signs, different protocols.
And you're gonna tell us something? You know, you asked me my favorite sign downtown. I'm not sure he's still there, but that fisherman or worker was, who was holding the harbor tourist, that's my favorite sign. And my daughter comes to town and she said, that's great. Yes. And that's a sign.
Wait, where is it?
Not sure he's there anymore. He used to be.
I think he's still there.
Alleyway walk, uh, going down to like the bumpo.
Yeah, yeah.
Like cross.
But that's an example of.
Sea level?
Yeah, yeah, between sea level.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's an example of an exceptional sign is kind of nice and endearing because it's one-off. You wouldn't want like fifteen. It would look weird.
Right, yes.
Right.
Every child a fish in the head.
Yeah. Okay, so, 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 so do you think?
So we'll be bringing, I think, a summary, a list type, you know, venue, as well as obviously we'll get into every language, but I definitely, like Jennifer said earlier, I'd much rather have the higher level discussion first and come to a consensus of what we like and don't like. And then do the more detailed word spitting and language and so forth in there, so that we're not going around in circles with language. We're agreeing on the overall policy and preferences and then writing accordingly. Um, well, obviously we're working on, you know, that right now, but merging things together for these.
So maybe, maybe you or someone could lead a discussion, you know, a structured discussion.
Yeah.
That would go through different types of signs in different areas.
Yes, to all the key issues or questions.
Because it's hard, it's really hard to say, what do you think about signs, you know?
Yeah, I think we pulled a few visual examples to kind of illustrate, this is what we're talking about. So we may have it in mind, but if you're not visualizing, we've got it right there to say, this is exactly what we're talking about. We, it's not addressed very well today. Here's what we're thinking or here's what.
And as you, as you saw probably in our, in the Portsmouth thing, there's, we have many illustrations in the ordinance.
Right. And I like that too, wherever possible, absolutely.
Okay, so Story Avenue?
Um, so Story Avenue, um, I had to postpone some of the work on this, uh, this last week due because of the, uh, only AD and MB coming somewhere. Um, but we will be digging into the Story Ave, Bob and Rick and I have had some exchanges on some of these, you know, kind of visual examples of other locations. Uh, I'm still compiling because I have a set of my own. And I think our day idea was to kind of, um, we're gonna be working with a consultant who's gonna be on board. I'm still waiting for the state contract or extended contract to come back to me so I can engage the consultant.
Have you chose that consultant?
Um, I'm gonna be working with Johnson.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm still talking with them because they have a slightly different take on, on that scope instruction in there. But anyway, we'll, we'll sort that out. Um, I'll talk to you more actually. Um, but anyway, they're gonna help us to do the visualization process primarily. I think, you know, the idea is that we will help to craft more of the language side of it. It's more important, I think, here and Rick, you know, differently as a player. Um, we've worked a lot as a consultant. I think it'll be helpful for us to, to stop, you know, not having a little thing of, we always stress language in front of everybody and say, let's focus on this language. But to actually step back and talk about it more spatially, experientially, what do we want that area to feel like in the future? So them helping us to kind of do some renderings, remodeling, kind of spatially. Just like we think, we were thinking about the K-marts, so if you respect what happens with that, um, that might be too large on a, on a rezoning basis. We wouldn't say let's rezon the entire area and make it, you know, a structured park. There might be a reason and given instance why it's appropriate or reasonable or, or beneficial or level. But I don't know that we would allow a large structure or structures like that throughout the entire area here, right? I mean, we probably all agree on that. So if that's the case, then. Um, they can help us to visualize that, you know, show them what that might look like, you know, and the sort of before and after type thing. And then. From there you go into, here's what the language should look like to basically, you know, enable or allow those things to happen. So. We might encourage or allow, you know, some additional height, it's got the commercial on the first floor, you know. So there's things like that that we're gonna, you know, back into in terms of language. But I think if we agree on where we could see the architectural massing, you know, benefits happen, streetscape being better defined, parking lots being supported in, in some way. Um, you know, adding the residential with commercial, the traditional sort of residential above the commercial as opposed to being totally separate, you know, things like that. I think if we can come to a bigger of that, if you recall the. Cursory kind of visuals that were in the, um, Harvard Kennedy School, they took that. Um, but I think obviously with the examples of, well, the Rick and I will go together, we'll be zipping through those, saying, you know, here's an example, what do we think about the application of this type of scenario here? And that's gonna go into the rendering and then which goes in the code itself essentially. It's all gonna take time to develop, uh, it all take time to redevelop. Uh, and some experiences will not happen near term. It'll be a while before, or, you know, if they never happen on those parcels. But we can at least on the bigger parcels or the bigger opportunities, I think, particularly I'm thinking of the lots that, um, like Port Plaza and the Market Basket ones, you know, where there's a huge sea of parking. Or there's no streetscape defined, go down a low street. Those are things irrespective of the K-mart, we can help them better frame better in the future. So. I think if we, I tend to think of it as, you know, having a, a new village center of what you are in downtown. Village center of Newburyport that's more representative of Newburyport when you get off the highway, you don't feel like arriving in strip mall anywhere. It's never gonna be the downtown. It's not quite gonna be the four yard district guy there, but it should have some similar qualities, I think. And it certainly should represent aesthetically, you know, experientially to report as best as it can. The corridor near the highway interchange is gonna be hard to change over time because it's a lot of state control and with the roadway and that kind of thing, and those will be more difficult. But there are areas that we can control better and by rezoning, we can not only improve what's, um, what's codified there, but also potentially give incentives. And that's where like padding another floor, if you put the commercial on the first floor, you know. Those are things that I'm willing to, they say, hey, extra floors aren't even reasonable to have here or there. And I also think we should encourage, right? Not just, you know, block massing across the area.
Hmm.
Um, so anyway, stay tuned for additional visual examples of that, the scope and the consul, the consultants work, uh, them chiming in. They. Will be here for some meetings, but some meetings will be on, are with us. Um, so it depends on, you know, the time, meetings and so forth. Some of it will be, uh, informal, a lot of it will be, I think, you know, informal, working with them, but some of it will be our formal process where we're trying to pull in as much as we can with the city council as well. Because we want to be on the same page as much as we can with something that we can bring forward for adoption at the end of the process. Um, and that's difficult because, at least I have seen, always a difficult thing because of bandwidth. It's just everybody's bandwidth, trying to get the number of meetings required. Get them just scheduled, stay on track with them, get all the inputs, sort of back, uh, getting twenty different people, where we have nine labor members and eleven city councilors, so getting all these parties, you know, on the same page of all the provisions is difficult. So I, um, if we can conceptualize initially what we agree on and then work that into the final language, I think, yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you, if Dodson does what they normally do, which is maybe a very high level. Imagining, conceptualizing what the corridor could look like, but the technical is translating that.
The language, right, yeah.
Good. But we need to do a legend.
Yes, yes. So that's, and with this. Yes, yes. So that's, and with this, and I thank you, by the way, for closing the hearing of the ADU. Even though the city council will look at this final version, will be approved and make sure it's got all the stuff in there.
Yeah, I think it's not so much that it has to, I think, I think I wanted to phrase it as these are recommendations.
Agreed, agreed. I think, well, I think.
We're not doing a subject as we're saying.
Right.
These are things we recommend.
Yeah, I mean, my sense was that like 75%, at least of those were gonna be in there at the end of the day anyway. And if that's the case, that allows, even though it's gonna carry over the next calendar year, that would just be the fun vote by the council on that one, which means our bandwidth and more important, perhaps, there be. Can be focused on the new thing, because we do, you know, they have budget cycle, there's always something, whether it's some resets or budget cycle or so. We need to recognize that we're gonna have, even on their end or anybody's, you know, we have a limited bandwidth from each, people depending on their schedules. So we want to be efficient about our use of, our ability to use their time.
I think the, the thing that, my perspective is, it'd be great if you could get the signs done for the budget season stuff.
Yes.
You're not gonna get the story avenue done, but you don't need, you don't need action.
That's right.
So you just need to get, you need to be working while they're doing one.
That's right, yeah, I 100% agree. I definitely want the signs to be adopted before the budget cycle begins there. I think that's definitely, granted, we have to have a fair amount of discussion about some of these things with, with the council, we should be on the same page there, you know. But I definitely have to, and it's definitely.
Can I ask a question on the signs? When the signs, when, when, when they're and some signs are not going to be conforming, is it that they have to replace it or the next time they?
Their grandfather. Yeah, it's grandfathered like any other thing, it's just a question of what they want to do going forward.
Okay. Just to be clear on signs, it's, there, there is case law that says, even if a sign, despite whatever. There is case law that says, if you're simply relettering a sign in the same size, you can rebrand it whatever you want. So when something changes from, you know, whatever iteration of Bank of America is now, if you keep it the same size, you can change the bank name without relief again.
I agree.
Even if it's on a freestanding sign, that wouldn't be allowed.
I'm thinking things more like, like there's downtown, there's a few like backlit signs, whether it's the tube lighting or whatever. And which I personally don't, I don't like, I think it's become too, it's not keeping it what I think the downtown is. So let's say that that was taken out, right?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because we, internal elimination or the formal elimination is one of the questions, like we were saying, it's one of those things we need to look at. Like I'm okay with panel lighting, for instance, I think is a preferable, more subdued way of doing something like.
Like a boos neck coming down, like if you have.
That's another way.
And everybody had a, had a conforming.
That is what's currently supposed to be, it's all supposed to be external lighting in the downtown. I'm not exactly sure which, which sign you're referencing. There are some that, and again, the downtown is.
Has very, like sea level, I feel like has the back lighting, I think it's the real estate firms that have back lighting.
I feel as they do. Signs that I'm thinking of are three of the downtown, and therefore they're not subject to the actual DOD or regulations.
That's what, that's what we did, what we did in Portsmouth, you probably saw us, we created these, aside from the zoning districts, we created sign districts. And the sign districts were more logical boundaries for their signs, I think, because sometimes.
A little, we're probably a little, only because of the layering, however, we think we agree conceptually, it's just because some of our boundaries, like the Daphne Nola district, you might say, where they're top of the year. But it would be harder for us, I think, in some ways to have another layer.
That's fine.
What I, what I would say to that, say the sea level sign were to come down, because, because of the type of sign that that is, the new sign that went up would not necessarily, and again, if that were to be in the DOD, which really that's not, there isn't something other sides of the street, I don't. It would not be able to be replaced with a sign of internal illumination. But that's another, to, to Rick's point, we have two different districts on either side of the streets, so it gets confusing.
I agree with Rick, we should try to get, you know, formally, well, from a way, my belief, and Jennifer can tell me, we should disagree, I think, without necessarily creating new districts per se or zones per se, because I think that could be problematic in other ways, I do think we should try to have a consistency.
Well, I think maybe just not telling it to downtown or the street.
Right, right, some other.
Saying, saying, saying it's, you know, you, you can sort of look at the Story Avenue area, you can look at, you know, you can look at areas of town.
Yeah.
Without.
Kind of think about that.
Because the, you know.
They don't make sense from the.
The same way that three center street doesn't make sense to be in the business district. It's the same, you need to look at something more logical and, and, and sea level is a great example of that. And the other way you can do it is you can do it through amortization, non-conform signs, so, you know, over a period of time. In terms of another years, if you have to spend more than a certain amount to, to data the place assignment.
Or you could do it, you could say like the Story Avenue district and you could say everything.
Yeah, exactly.
So now you just have two districts and so you're not.
Love it, then look at the industrial district, so that's, you know, the business.
That'd be a way they like all ties to, which would be like all, let's be random, it's like all of these. Two others I can't think of right now, you know what I mean?
I think one of our discussions, one of those issues is geographic areas, right? Sort of what are the areas we're trying to, the certain scope of areas we're trying to define here, right? And then there's the different criteria or areas of signs that we've written.
Because you've got, you've got, you've got residential districts is always, so. You treat that as one, and you treat highway business, what we call the, the, the Story Avenue. Because that's.
And you can also do it as support, because sometimes like Craig and Anne maybe have a corridor district where they say Story Avenue. That up to a certain point is a different sign. And not anything optional that, which would be in the same zone, doesn't apply because it's not in the visual link board.
I think right off of that, we can add provision on internal illumination in residential zoning districts. We don't have that right now, so.
And I, and I would say, you know, put something else on here, please. We had a brief conversation about lighting standards.
Yeah.
And today, I think we, we need better, better lighting section in our zone, because that's, that's.
Come up a couple times.
Somebody was asking me, I think actually Shida was asking me about our, do we have dark sky standards? And it's, oh, no. You're gonna high school, we made it like that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I agree, I guess I have two thoughts on the dark. One is I, I think generically, I'd want to apply that, with the exception of the fact that I do think there are some architectural features, for instance, that are worthy. And I actually, a custom house, you know, this evening, I did this evening and, you know, that is not an uplift facade. But it should be, in my view, have, you can put right behind the buoys, lighting pictures are showing it. And that, I realize that you could debate, you know, how do you deal with that in terms of the dark sky? I wouldn't have any problem with that being uplifted in that scenario there because I don't see another way to get it.
But, well, front lighting, I guess, as opposed to sky.
100% agree. All my point is just that there's still gonna be some degree of glare that you upward, that would violate the ideal of.
Well, I think the other thing is.
But it's worth it, I think, overall, in that scenario.
And historic, historic downtown lighting, lighting, you know.
Right, but most areas of the city, why, what's the, what's the argument for allowing a, a, a bright sky, right? I mean, what's the reason, I mean, there isn't any, right? So we just say it's not allowed, everything's gotta be that shoebox, you know, and I'm totally agree with it, across the board. It's just those architectural examples, right, where like there might be some spillage only because you're trying to hang it where the facade and the.
You can, you can sort of, you know, talk about monumental buildings or something.
Exactly, exactly, historical or significant.
Is there anything about normal res- residential landscape up parking?
Well, that's the, like.
There are like year round Christmas trees. They are, believable. You walk around at night, you're like, oh my God, I wouldn't want to be your neighbor.
That's gonna be a bigger discussion though, because while I definitely agree, we need to address the residential piece of it in some way. I think once we start digging down deeper into that, and we might have some people who are trying to preserve rights to do expertise. And that might be more difficult, we might have to parse off at that point, there's a difficulty with addressing some of that or difference of opinion. Might be better to get the rest of the package and do all those things, even that is still, I'm just conceptualizing. That because it might, people might be sensitive to the idea of.
You do have a watered or something, there's so many watts eliminate per square foot of private property or something.
Yeah, I do have one hesitation about that aspect of it, and Jennifer has to deal with most of this, but I just, the idea of using a threshold that is harder for someone on the city side to deal with the monitoring enforcement. I am sensitive to the idea of using something that becomes problematic, sound or light, that is not something that the zoning administrator can rightly evaluate or apply. I would be worried about using something like that or rather use something that's easily, more candidly measured, force. It's just those charts and things that you sometimes see about, you know, this or that, and there's some sound is similar things.
Yeah, I mean, but quality of light and that advantage.
Yeah, no, it'd be a mess, I agree, I agree, some houses just take it so far.
Yeah, and maybe we could pull up a few examples of those and come up with something that would address the host scenarios without infringing upon the rights that others might still want to preserve in some way in the residential areas. That would be a sweeping discussion that might be more involved if we need to.
But the, the lighting conversation, although there's lighting tied to signage, the lighting, the general lighting conversation is a different one than.
A more broad.
Talking about.
Yeah, yeah, right now we're just talking about the sign to piece of it, but that's definitely a part of it.
Yeah.
The static side, yeah. And then there will be other things we want to work on as well, like for signage that we know is, is working right out, but there will be other ones too. So even though we think like, we're, we're doing, you know, ADUs and MBTA, but we're gonna have other zoning things to bring forward, you, so this stuff is not gonna stop. We're gonna keep having zoning hearings, like some of the councils were asking, you know, it's even, we do actually continue to just, I wanna say every month, like, we do actually, to get things done with zoning. It would require all us, this is the difficult part, it's, it requires like, not just doorwork, but the counselors and the ramp to come to all these meetings. Because the only way to work through these debates is the meetings. So unfortunately it would necessitate going to next year, more meetings on zoning.
But does, does that approach get better if you did it by subcommittee? You know, in other words, I know you have the obligation for the public hearing, you have that, but, you know, there's a lot of way, like signage could be a subcommittee.
We're effectively going to have the equivalent of that with the stakeholder group, but I think we don't avoid this still, the time is still needed in that public forum or in this, in that forum here. We're still gonna be doing that, but that will not unfortunately entirely diminish the process we still have to do here because it'll only be representative of the best of our ability, those stakeholders. And there'll still be new ideas or differences in opinion that come up in that larger forum. So we are definitely going to take that approach and that's our starting point as best we can to work on some of these things. And that will work throughout, but it's going to be in this forum no matter what, and there will be a fair amount of discussion here. That we can't avoid, it's gonna be because of difference of opinion and lots of it.
Yeah, and you can't, you're not gonna trump it that, people are gonna have their opinion and they're gonna have their time to process. But I was just thinking, like, we were talking about signage, sending you information and then you develop it. Well, you could do it another way, saying, no, subset of us, they're good together and pull that together, so it's not all on your plate or on the.
I would say send it to Jennifer and I, and because we're gonna be working with others, you know.
This one's already kind of far down the path. I have an example, I 100% agree, what, I don't know if this is feasible, but I'm gonna put it out here. Where we don't specifically have sponsors yet, I don't know if there's the ability to workshop a draft in an informal setting. We don't typically do that in Portsmouth sometimes.
Always.
Does workshop the draft before it gets sponsored?
But we don't have sponsors.
Right, well, okay, so then, but.
It's a funny thing to define as a workshop, because I mean, obviously, we're gonna be, before a council's gonna sponsor a document, I gotta fill up with generically, everything that's, most of the scope's in there. So we're gonna be working through all that with them and we have to make sure that what we're working on isn't gonna be a complete waste of time. And you gotta be at least get a consensus on that, so that'll be a key point to discuss with the sponsors. Is, you know, going along the way, are you, you know, good with these things and these things and these things? If we run into problems with that, that move, we might have more discussion. Okay.
Is that anything else? We've been talking about, anybody else have anything you want to do?
Do you, in terms of the, what, well, tomorrow on the ADU and the, I guess it's not as urgent, we can.
Yeah, we have a couple days and, you know, I've got family visiting, so.
Why don't we circle back between Monday and.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Just so we can.
When I have some free time, I'll just write up a draft like I did last.
Okay, okay. And then maybe we can ship it off to the council, even though the council will still carry their vote no matter what for the next year, they could at least take their first vote on the revised version. I presume we're carrying most of what you've recommended and maybe not all, almost all, and then that can be adopted in January first meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Is there a second, second? We hear roll call vote, Alden?
Yes.
Well, Charlie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Heather?
Yeah.
Rick, yes, okay, we are adjourned.
All right, I'm gonna drive home.